You're joining us live from City Hall here in the great city of South Fulton. Introducing Mayor and Council. Mayor Khalid. Councilwoman Dr. Katherine Rau, District One. Councilwoman Carmelita Gomes, District Two. Councilwoman Helen Zenobia Willis, District Three. Councilman J.C. Sebastian, District Four. Councilwoman Kiyosha B. Bell, District Five. Councilwoman Natasha Williams Brown, District Six. Mayor Pro Tem Linda Becker Pritchett, District Seven. Interim City Attorney Sarah Kelly. City Clerk Cory Adams. City Manager Sharon D. Subedan. Thank you for joining the City of South Fulton Council Meeting, a city on the rise.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Councilwoman, well, Mayor Pro Tem Linda Pritchett. And welcome to this Tuesday, April eighth's City Council Work Session. I call this meeting to order, and Mr. Clerk, if you will call the roll.
Yes, ma'am. This is the roll call for the April eighth, 2025 City Council Work Session. The Honorable Katherine F. Rau, District One.
Present.
The Honorable Carmelita Gomes, District Two.
Present.
The Honorable Helen Z. Willis, District Three.
Present.
The Honorable J.C. Sebastian, District Four.
Present.
The Honorable Kiyosha B. Bell, District Five.
Present.
The Honorable Natasha Williams Brown, District Six.
Present.
The Honorable Linda B. Pritchett, District Seven.
Here.
And the Honorable Mayor Khalid is absent. Madam Mayor Pro Tem, you have a call.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The mayor will be here a little later, but if you would call the first item.
That brings us to Roman numeral three, City Manager items. The monthly report by our City Manager Sharon D. Subedan. Presentation of the Rise Employee of the Month Award.
Good afternoon, Mayor Pro Tem and Council. Last month, we had a catch-up Rise Award, and this month, we're back on schedule. So with no further ado, I would like to present the Respect Integrity Service and Effectiveness Rise Award. Is this month is proudly presented to Centrel Kennard. And this month, I'd like to introduce, we have one new management member, Brian Davis. Brian, if you're in the audience, please stand up. Brian is in our Facilities Department as Operations Manager. You'll be seeing a lot of Brian as we continue on our facilities projects. Thank you. And I submitted the City Manager Report with lots of information, along with the Finance and Public Works Report, and now I'm subject to your questions.
So, Mr. Clerk, is the queue up? Okay. I don't even see where I can raise my hand on, in the queue, IT, if you're there somewhere. But who? Well, I don't see the queue on the screen. Okay, so we cannot get into the queue, and so Ms. Subedan, if you will release your microphone, please. Mr. Clerk.
Yes, I see everyone in except for one person.
Okay, in the midst of our technical difficulties, I will acknowledge anyone by the raising of hand, and I see Councilwoman Willis and then Councilwoman Gomes. Councilwoman Willis?
Yes, thank you. Ms. Subedan, I want to put this on the record because I'm getting a lot of complaints about the elevator being down at Wacomar Park. And I've asked seniors to watch this because I'm getting complaints daily, and they're within their right to complain. We have a very large, active senior community. The elevator disrepair was reported to me by a resident on January twenty-eighth, 2025. I then sent an email to your office. And Mr. and Dr. Cooper, who Park and Recs reports up to, and he replied back, and I'm just going to summarize saying that he did not know the elevator was out of operation. At the time that I got the complaint, residents said they were, it was out of operation for a couple of weeks. Since then, I followed up on several occasions, asking for a project plan on when this elevator is going to be repaired. You did say that you are having problems with getting a vendor to repair the elevator. Transparently, the lack of maintenance of that elevator does predate you. We only have two elevators in buildings that we own in the city of South Fulton, and that is your administrative building and that is Wacomar Park. The elevator being down at Wacomar Park is the elevator that will take people up to the soft track. The only soft track. We have a lot of builders, in my opinion, that need to become, that come into compliance with ADA. San Town doesn't even have an elevator, and they have steps. But this elevator was in Wacomar Park and has been in Wacomar Park for a very long time. Seniors are complaining. I won't belabor this council with the numerous emails and text messages I have received. And so I would ask that you please, for the record, let this council and the constituents know what's going on with the elevator and how it was their course of action to move forward.
Sure. As I shared with you, the, there are only three companies that are qualified in our area to work on elevators, Schindler, Otis, and Nobland. When they came out to assess the elevator, they realized it needed to be updated to current standard. So it wasn't a simple repair. They also quoted us what it would be to replace the elevator. The repair is about twenty-two thousand. To replace the elevator is eighty thousand. The eighty thousand repair would be long-term, but it would take even longer. And so I authorized them to move forward with the repair, and I told the staff that at a later date, we may consider doing a complete renovation, a complete replacement, but at this point, move forward with a renovation, repair. We gave them the go-ahead to do that work, and they have not shown up. We have now gone on to another vendor who has promised that they will be out there on Tuesday. We have posted a sign to let people know and basically ask them to pardon our, you know, the length of time that it has been down. It's not for the lack of trying on our part. We have been working with two vendors to try to get them out there to get the repair done. It was fair for them to give us, you know, the replacement cost, given the, how much it's going to cost. But at this point, we've decided to move forward with the repair, and we're going to use another company because the first two companies at this point have let us down.
And so can we please get a maintenance schedule for the elevator? I know back in the day, the Department of Labor used to maintain elevators, but they don't do it anymore. So we, from my understanding, we have not been maintaining and getting the elevator inspected like we should. So when this is repaired, is there any way that we can get on a maintenance and inspection schedule?
Yes, we will be, well, Director Dyson and his staff, including Brian, has put everything on a preventive maintenance schedule. So that's air conditions, boilers, water heaters. And as we catch up and do major renovations, everything will be on a preventive maintenance schedule, including elevators.
Okay. The other thing I want to bring to your attention is that the floors at that facility, and a lot of areas are starting to buckle. And so I would ask that we get, I know we put in a budget to redo the floors. Is there any way I can get a schedule, a plan on when we're going to, because we're now in April, and we approve that in October, so.
We've deliberately pushed it back because we know there's a very high likelihood. So, you know, we just did demo on Cliftondale Schoolhouse, and predictably, we found asbestos. So we have to do a hazardous material replacement. When we pull up that floor, we're likely going to have some kind of hazardous material problem, whether it's mold or asbestos. So we're trying to time this with the department to where it's the best time. I don't think we can take a risk on trying to get it done before summer because the facility is heavily used by the kids in the summer. So we're working with the department to figure out what's going to be the best time. And it's not really a situation where we can just section off parts of the facility to do it, except for the rooms, and the rooms are heavily used. So we are planning to do it. We are working with the staff to figure out when is the best time to essentially close the facility down, which is never a good time.
So this is my concern. Last year, we had this in the budget as well, and it wasn't enough in the budget. The same issue was timing, and so now we are approaching spring, maybe summer, and then we're going to be in a new budget cycle. So we're in a third, we're going to be approaching another budget cycle. We have budgeted for the floors to be done, and they're not going to be done. And this floors are starting to buckle in certain areas, and what I don't want to happen is something happens and someone get injured because in one of the areas, there's a hole in the floor. So I would ask that we expeditiously work towards a schedule that we can agree on to get those floors repaired. At the end of the day, we just, we have to do what we have to do. We inherited buildings that are in disrepair, and residents, we would have to ask to be patient so we can bring them into compliance. Last, I would ask, when will the signage? Where they place, they place electronic signage, but nothing is being, so do you know when they're going to stop putting information? Or when we can put information?
Yeah, we're having to run electricity, so they have to put it in place. Then electricity has to be run from the main panel to the facility, and they're going to have to trench to do it. It will be coming online. I know it's a little frustrating to see it sitting there, but we do have to have it in place in order for them to run the power up to it, to make sure it's perfect. So that, that will happen. I will send an email and get back to you on these three things.
Okay. So I'm asking for a project schedule timeline for the, for the signage, for the floors, and after the maintenance, people come out next Tuesday for the elevator. And that, I would appreciate that. Lastly, can you please, I know we discussed that, the dual, dual roundabout on Union and Old Fairburn, the contract has been signed. From my understanding, everything is ready to go. So can I have a project timeline on when we can have the ribbon cutting and get that going?
Groundbreaking? Groundbreaking?
Yes.
Groundbreaking?
Yes.
Yes, we got it down to you.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Gomes? Ms. Subedan, if you will.
Okay. Thank you for the report. It was very informative. But I do have a question in reference to the Buttoner Road and Union Road Roundabout. So it does say that there's a timeline of expected completion for April the thirtieth. I want to know if we are on schedule still with that, and looking at some of the stuff that has been done, I'm not sure if we will meet that deadline, but I know a lot of residents have been asking, when would that be completed? So that's my question.
At this time, that's the date that is still projected. We have had some weather issues, and I always caution everyone when I put a date out there saying weather permitting, so the weather has not been totally cooperative, but we will follow up, and we'll also make sure that we get ribbon cutting scheduled once we have a final date. So I'll do a follow-up with you on that.
Another question would be any form of temporary lighting. I kind of drove through there the other day when it was kind of raining, but the lighting, it was dark, and I did not almost follow the, the cones or reflectors. It is kind of confusing. Is there anything for temporary lighting?
So the project has permanent lighting with it. If the permanent lighting isn't in place when we're ready to open, I'll work with Public Works like we did on the other intersection to see if we can do something temporary until the permanent lighting comes on board.
And my last question is in reference to Buttoner and Camp Creek. I can't remember from the report, but I do see that they are doing some improvements, G dot, for the Buttoner and Camp Creek intersection, as well as the Buttoner and Old Fairburn extending the turn lane. Do we have a timeline on the replacement or widening of the bridge?
So that is in your report. I'll have to search through for it. I believe that we've completed our right-of-way acquisition on the project, and before the end of the meeting, I'll be able to give you the update on when we expect that to be let for, for bidding.
Councilman Sebastian?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Adam Subedan, I just have just a couple of questions. This, this is on the financial side. I, I noticed that between 2023 and 2024, for the property tax revenue, about five million dollars had stood out. Is, is that the budget estimate is high for those years? Or is that a real gap between those years that we're still chasing that five million dollars?
A little bit of both. So I know in twenty-three, we've been a little optimistic in our projections on property tax. As you know, there's a process. The process is people can contest their taxes if they feel like their appraisal or their estimate is incorrect. And so we did tend to budget a little more aggressively on the revenue side. It didn't hurt us because we had other funding sources that overperformed. But I would be, I would, it would be true to say that we do have some past due and outstanding taxes that we probably need to meet with the Tax Commissioner to press him to try to collect on some of our outstanding for past years.
And on the adblocking tax, that's just early in the year while we are at, I think it looks like thirty-seven percent, right? That's why that one is low compared to last year. Is, is that a timing issue? Because we're this early in the year. It's page fifteen, I think. Bullet point two, in the notes.
It looks like our actual for twenty-five is fifty-seven point four. So if you look at page nine, it shows the property tax revenue at ninety-four point seventeen percent. Not sure about the notes, but the first chart, so we're well into the year. And we've collected of the sixty-eight point ninety that we budgeted, fifty-seven point four-three has been collected as of February twenty-eighth, page number nine. Okay.
Anyone else going once, going twice? Okay. Mr. Clerk, next item.
That brings us to our presentations for this afternoon. We have one presentation. It's the So Food So Clean Beautification Presentation. Will be presented by Shaheen Solomon, Director, Department of Public Affairs.
Greetings, Mayor and, Mayor Pro Tem, Pritchett, and the council members of the great city of South Fulton. My name is Shaheen Solomon, and I proudly serve as your Director of Public Affairs here in our great city. Today, we're kicking off something transformational. So Food So Clean, You Are Here. This is more than a beautification campaign. It's about identity, unity, and pride. Letting people know where they are and why it matters. This initiative is the spark of a cultural shift in the city of South Fulton, from picking up litter to empowering residents with civic pride. We're, we're creating a cleaner, greener city together. We're not just talking aesthetics. We're talking action, engagement, and long-term impact. So there was an initial ask, and that original task was very simple, curb litter. But we quickly realized we can't fix what people don't feel connected to. That's when we knew we had to make sure people know they're actually in the city of South Fulton and feel proud of it. So we have two bullet points here. The first one you'll realize and see that it says, "We wanted to raise awareness of the initiative in curb littering and take personal responsibility for our community, the city of South Fulton." They want to use this campaign to help people understand that they're actually in the city of South Fulton and have a sense of belonging and pride. So that brings us to phase one and what that looks like. So we're launching a campaign that's both straightforward and powerful. You are here, and trash goes there. It reminds people that our community matters, and so does how we treat it. It gives us something we all can rally behind. And with phase one, you understand that when you are here, trash goes there. These receptacles right here in front of you. It's very simple in context, believe me. Establishing in the minds of our residents and visitors that while, reminding everyone to keep it clean. Let's take a look at some of the artwork and visuals that will accompany this campaign. Billboards are very engaging. These billboards here feature, they feature the pinpoint that reminds people that they are actually here in the city of South Fulton. But it also features mapping of the city behind it. These are actual street overviews of the locations throughout the city of South Fulton. And I want you guys to look at the, the tagline here at the bottom, "Keep So Food So Clean Clean." So this is a play on the very popular OutKast song, "So Fresh So Clean." We're working on that. Our next one here, we're taking it a step further. You'll see the campaign features the blue and green garbage receptacle synonymous with the city of South Fulton, and has become a known brand within and around our city. Placement of branding at various public transportation pods around the city. These locations tend to collect mounds of trash and known to be collection places for litter. This messaging will be placed right at visual eye to help curb litter. Another rendition of the signage will be placed, continuing with brand visibility. So this is important right here. We just completed our strategic plan. We want to ensure that, that our plan and our brand campaign align holistically with that strategic plan. And so this ties directly to our strategic plan. It improves quality of life, strengthens neighborhoods, and enhances the city's image, supporting economic development and civic pride. I'm sorry, this got off. There we go. So education. So we want to highlight specifically what education looks like. Getting the community involved includes a few things. So education and awareness, and branding and promotional. So this is where we spotlight and showcase specifically what our brand is and how to get it in front of people. And phase two is our departmental support and engagement. We'll highlight what that looks like momentarily as well. And then you can't really have a campaign without getting feedback from your community. So aligning in action. So we have here, "We're not just doing this alone. This is a citywide team effort." Code enforcement empowers residents through education on common violations, encouraging cleaner, safer neighborhoods through voluntary compliance. The Code Cares Initiative builds community trust by assisting seniors and vulnerable residents while joint efforts on blight and dumping significantly enhanced neighborhood's quality of life. We have cultural affairs, which will help transform public spaces with art installations and murals that reflect local identity and inspire community engagement. Through youth involvement and vibrant festivals, the, the department fosters pride, creativity, and a shared cultural experience throughout and across the city of South Fulton. Parks and Recreation enriches students' lives, residents' lives by maintaining inviting green spaces and leading beautification projects that bring neighbors together. By engaging youth and seniors in on-hand and hands-on community initiatives, the department strengthens intergenerational bonds and cultivates civic responsibility. The department strengthens intergenerational bonds and cultivates civic responsibility. Public Affairs, which is my nice little department right here, who's joining me today. They'll help amplify community pride by highlighting beautification successes and recognitions um throughout uh the community with strategic media outreach and branding through educational campaigns and creative materials. The team will help empower residents to engage and su- and support the city in all of it, all of its improvement efforts. Public Works plays a vital role in keeping public spaces clean and welcoming um and welcoming by managing litter removal, graffiti cleanup, sidewalk maintenance, and general maintenance. Their logistical support for community cleanup events ensures operations run smoothly and efficiently across the city. And we'll also have the Police Department which will he- help enhance public safety and fosters community trust by providing traffic support and engaging in clean and safe beautification initiatives. Their proactive involvement helps deter illegal dumping and builds meaningful connections with youth, youth and residents. Human Resources rallies staff for citywide service through a week of service initiatives. This is is in true collaboration. Additional information and details about a kickoff week are forthcoming. So we're, we're taking our message to the people and reaching our target audiences. Our recreation centers, festivals, family events, meeting residents where they are helps reinforce our message that this campaign actually belongs to all of the residents. So why we love it. You are here isn't just a location pin, it's a proclamation. It's flexible, it's powerful, and meaningful. We're redefining here as a place of pride, unity, and potential. Phase two. Phase two is about defining who we are. We're building a brand that gives us cohesion, pride, and a clear identity internally and externally. This is where implementation meets engagement. Too many of us, too many people here don't really know that they're actually in the city of South Fulton. We're building a brand that's recognizable, shareable, and sustainable. This uplifts everyone, residents, workers, businesses, and leaders alike. You are here centers the resident. It says you matter, your home matters, your role in the city matters. This is where community prize meets implementation leading to progress. So we're hitting the streets with billboards, promotional gear, media outreach, events, you name it. Trash bins will be visible and convenient. Every touch point reinforces you are here, keep it clean. You'll see a little bit of the brand aspect that accompanies it. Um some of the photos that we've taken through our department around the city at major events will be featured on some of these things that you mentioned or that I've mentioned throughout the parks and throughout the major thoroughfares and corridors throughout the city. These are some signages that we're looking to actually implement down the road throughout our parks and in the major corridors which would feature uh a lot of the events that are happening here, like we are South Fulton, you are here. This is where music happens, this is where play happens, this is where business happens, this is the city of South Fulton. So what's next? Now that you've seen the vision, let's talk next steps. So I would like to invite up, invite up ACM Davis to talk about what that looks like.
All right, so was that an applause for me? Or the end close for Shaheen? Uh so I have the exciting task to share about how we're gonna implement this program. And so I so thank the the Public Affairs Team for their creativity by bringing this message because it's very important and it complements and elevates this initiative to create a beautification plan for the city. And so um also I want to thank the departments because we we're gonna have, as you saw in the presentation, a number of departments who are directly involved operationally to carry out this plan. And so going forward and what's next, we will have a formal beautification plan in place that will be formed to share with with uh the body. And so we will be addressing issues that we've heard from you regarding cleaning sidewalks, illegal dumping, uh litter control. And what's most important we want to share is, as you heard, identity, community pride, and also making sure we all know that we are all responsible for the beautification of our s- our wonderful city. And so the beautification plan would include include goals and objectives and particularly goals and objectives that will line up to what you just heard uh aligned with our strategic plan. And and also with that, we will have programs, programs specifically to meet those goals and uh and objectives. And then we'll have reporting, reporting by departments to report accountability, to make sure that what we're doing in our uh the activities that we're uh bringing forth are um positive and effective as well as being able to know if we 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 reached our goals and then we evaluate and of course most and most importantly, be able to expand as we move further. And one of the other things that will be involved in this, in this effort is collaboration. Collaboration with some of our community partners. For instance, the Fulton Industrial Boulevard Community Improvement District. The Atlanta Airport Community Improvement District, uh some of our advisory boards and others. And so we want to leverage with our community partners to bring our resources together to have a more robust and elevated program. And so that is just a briefing, but uh we wanted to make sure you know that uh along with the message, the message elevates this initiative. We couldn't do it without this message because we know that we need to make sure we all are connected with the identity and the direction of the city. And so I appreciate uh the message that is coming forth with much creativity. We're looking forward to a very vibrant and quality plan that will bring us all together and move forward with a beautiful city. So with that, we open up for questions. Where's my applause? I couldn't help it.
The Chair recognizes Mayor Pro Tim Pritchett.
I thought we were about to board a flight. Okay, thank you so much for this presentation. I think that this is uh amazing and awesome because it's uh very needed. Uh and I would like to uh contribute some thoughts for your consideration. Um in aligning in action, the shopping plazas are a source of a lot of heartburn for me and many of my colleagues that have them in their districts. Because in the shopping plazas, um I think that Councilwoman Willis introduced legislation years ago to make sure that they're, to make it mandatory to have uh I think a minimum of three trash receptacles in each shopping plaza. I don't necessarily see that when I drive through the city and um litter and trash um in shopping plazas is extremely problematic. It's also problematic for me in one of my shopping plazas where uh the right of way begins and the shopping plaza ends and then there's all kind of debris. Um I have a shopping plaza that has dead trees. Um and just all other types of foolishness that makes our city look bad. In in these efforts, I would like to see some type of mandatory uh power washing or encouragement for the shopping plaza owners to power wash their asphalt. There are some uh businesses that have homeless people or even animals nearby and the smell and uh i- it's not nice and it's not sanitary. And I think um, I'm not telling anyone what to do, but I think that we need to have some type of I don't know if it's code enforcement that would go around, but we need to start inspecting these plazas. And when people are out of compliance, when when I smell the smell, when I see the trash, when I see things that don't make sense, um people I think need to be cited. Uh first encouraged to participate in this maintenance, beautification, and maintenance plan. Um I think there needs to be a plan and some education on how to keep your shopping plazas clean because um it's a big problem. Um also, in the section where you talked about we are here, our city has between ten and eleven zip codes. And a few years, when I first came on council, um I got T-shirts for my district which has like five zip codes and uh would say, would have our logo in three oh two nine six, three oh two nine one, three oh three, four nine, three oh two one three. Those are the ones that I can remember right now. Um if we can also uh, you know, have some pride concerning the variety of zip codes we have so that, as you mentioned, people may not know that they're in the city and um a lot of times they don't, including businesses. And when I go into a business and a shout out to my hotels, but you are not in Fairburn, you are in the city of South Fulton. And I believe that businesses should have signage that reflects our city because that becomes a problem um with our branding and our identity. Also, when we talked about business, I mean partners in this, I think the business owners and the property owners need to be our primary partners because that's where the majority of our beautification or lack of it is seen. So somehow we should gather them, talk to them, um have some workshops for them. Um it even helps with their economic development because people like to patronize places that look welcoming and inviting. And the last one that I'll mention is uh HOAs. They should be community partners because many of the HOAs would like to engage in uh community cleanup activities, um have issues with how to keep things clean, uh especially if they are main roads, things like that. So those are just a few suggestions that I have um that would help complement this wonderful plan that you have put together. And thank you again for your presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. I'd like to address a few of those things that you mentioned. And we're working with code enforcement to provide educational components to those local businesses in those communities who actually have um been suffering from blight in their areas to educate them. I think one of their slogans is education before citation. So we're working with them on that as well. In addition to the billboards, we're creating this billboard campaign because as you said, people are concerned about not knowing that they're actually in the city of South Fulton. So it's more of a wayfinding campaign from the north to the south and east and west to fulfill all of those static billboards throughout the city with this message so that when you enter the city of South Fulton, you know you're in the city of South Fulton. And the third thing I want to highlight here is that we're looking to partner within this particular campaign with local businesses as well. So you mentioned that it was a part of an ordinance for at least those shopping centers that have three receptacles there. We recommend those shopping centers and organizations to ensure they're actually abiding by those ordinances and become a part of this campaign.
The last thing I did want to mention is that on Oakley, in the Oakley Industrial Corridor, we are part of the South Fulton Community Improvement District. And one of the things that they focus on as well is beautification. Um and I think you met their executive director last week at the Capitol. So um I would love for them to be involved in this because they directly work with the property owners. Um you know, and I'm sure everyone would be interested in beautification. Thank you, I yield.
Thank you, the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Williams Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Um and thank you for the presentation. It is very timely because if you know what has been going down in the I won't say the DMs, but if you know it's been going down in email for the past couple days, um this has, you you got them, you got them. Um you know that this is currently a um hot topic. In the marketing, I see you have a picture of I guess the campaign going on the bus stops, but then down in the narrative, it just says billboards. So I just want to confirm that those billboards do include the martyr stops because you know, I got some that need it back. Um so that the ki- you know, as people are getting on the bus, particularly old national flat shows isn't very busy corner. And I've got a, you know, it's just a bunch of bus stops there. Um so that was one thing. And then the second thing was I see these trash cans and that these trash cans are going to go I guess in the recreational facilities, these branded trash cans. What about the trash cans at these martyr bus stops? So because you know, there's, if you look at the bus, an old national in front of the Dunkin' Donuts, that's a tiny trash can. And it's, you know, morning rush, it's overflowing and it'll just be overflowing. You know, until it's come, it's emptied out again. So will will there be outdoor trash cans that could be suitable for putting at these bus stops to go along with these very lovely billboards?
Thank you so much, Councilwoman Williams Brown. So our campaign is inclusive of the bus stops. So those are martyr station bus stops, but the signage belongs to the advertising firms. And so we have a relationship with the advertising firm to where we secured those um those advertising spaces at both those martyr station bus stops and on billboards throughout and across the city. And so in addition to that, you mentioned about um these receptacles here, these are prototypes receptacles. We're working with sanitation now to be able to roll out these not only inside of the recreation facilities but across all public spaces throughout the city of South Fulton. And so we'll have a plan um potentially to go to those locations that you mentioned. Um it's gonna be overall is us ensuring that we're working with Public Works to keep those s- bus stops clean during this particular campaign.
Okay, and along those lines, are you reaching out to the different groups around the city, the organization, so like the Alt National Merchants Association? Um I know that there's the Cascade Business, um you know, Clifton Community, we've got, you know, we've got we kind of have a little bit of an infrastructure there where some of these partnerships can help. I think particularly working with the old National Merchants Association because I believe that they are also developing a beautification campaign as well. So if 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 we can tie all of these things together um so that we're working, you know, as a cohesive unit. Um and I think this would be something that um Emmanuel would most likely be interested in with what um he's trying to launch with the Alt National Merchants Association to try to encourage the the business owners to um do a little bit better job about not necess- you know, things that are not violations of code but don't necessarily, you know, present well to the eye.
All right, go ahead, uh Madam Attorney.
Um there was a resolution that was passed in two thousand twenty-two, a resolution to adopt the Old National Livable Centers Initiative Plan that specifically allows for trash receptacles at martyr bus stations to reduce the litter along Old National Highway in particular. Um and then also to Councilwoman Willis's point, um the ordinance was twenty twenty-three dash zero fifteen. Um it's in municode as section six dash twenty thirteen that for commercial properties, multiple buildings and tenants in a plaza, um a comprehensive comprehensive waste management services are required, including the placement of trash receptacles outside of the plaza at a rate of one receptacle for every two businesses in each plaza with a minimum of one receptacle every thirty feet. So I think with, in addition to the law that we currently have on the books and this wonderful campaign, I think that that would be a great marketing um opportunity for the city.
Did you have any further? All right. All right, uh the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gomes.
Well, this, again, y'all know I've been begging for this. This is exciting. Um first of all, so good job. I read the presentation before uh the meeting and I was, it was excited. I do love the fact that in the presentation you have included art and culture. So kind of infusing that both will kind of give us some characteristic, number one, and then also draw, you know, some younger people in to kind of start getting on board with the campaign. So I love it. Now, I don't know about the copyrights yet, but we gonna work on that because I'm pretty sure that we probably get some. Now, I don't know about the copyrights yet, but we gonna work on that, because I'm pretty sure that we probably get some play off of that, but I like it. Um, I do have maybe just a few questions and maybe or concerns of budgeting for this campaign. Is there a budget and a timeline of when this will actually start? And have we kind of thought about overall for a six-month or a year campaign, how much would this necessarily cost?
Thank you, Councilwoman Gomes, for that question concerning the budget. So how we want to wrote it, roll, roll it out is in increments. So what we're doing right now, we're gathering all the current efforts that we're um, each department is involved in that uh enhances and brings about uh beautification in our, in our uh city. So for instance, we know that Public Works, they provide the um, disposal of the trash and the trash cans. They also work on some of our um, streets in making sure they're clean. And so all the other departments involved in it as well, like CDRA, they're, they're involved in the tree Atlanta by planting trees. So we are currently active in what we do in trying to beautify the city. But what we're doing right now is amplifying that process. And so the first phase will be making sure we make it known what we currently do. And then as we go along, we will be adding and um, increasing our efforts. For instance, as we talked about the art culture, we'll start putting together a program, we'll budget that, that the cost of those programs. And of course, we'll be seeking funding and advisement from our city manager on how we would budget those particular programs. So, so short answer, we're going to start out with what we currently do. We will add to it as we uh build our programs, education and awareness around that. And then we'll start rolling it out as funding is, is uh available.
So timeline, are you looking to start when? When are you looking to launch?
Uh, this month, because as you heard earlier, um, we're um, trying to align with uh Earth Day. And so uh, you'll hear uh, in the future near, very soon from HR, how we're just not walking the walk. We talking to, the talk with, as a city, the city staff. We want to get involved in, in being part of cleanup, because what we're trying to give the message is, we're all in this together. No one person, the city can't do it by itself. We're a community and we need to do this together. So we're ready to take that first step to show that we're mean, we mean business and we want to be part of keeping the city clean.
Okay, and I'm definitely liking these T-shirts. So I know this council has a lot of Earth Day activities. So uh, would love to see uh, some of the council members and staff in these shirts. So I don't know how you all are going to be rolling that all out, but um, if there's a way that in your campaign about recycling, and we, we have to do more education on recycling and also plastic reduction. If there's a way that you can possibly incorporate that in the campaign, I know we're trying to, you know, keep people up to date with, you know, curbing the litter, but that is also um, another way to kind of educate people in reference to recycling and reduction of plastic. Um, we talked about the sidewalk maintenance, and I guess maybe city manager, you know, we can talk about um, we, we can talk about something um, in reference to that, because that is also a big concern. And when you all said that you all will be doing this across departments, I think that's very important as well, because we're talking about, I think we had a series of emails today about the curbies. You know, that, that's going to be one of our identifiers of letting people know that you're in the city of South Fulton, because that's how I started to learn. That everybody, oh, this is the city of South Fulton. It only took me eight years. But the trash can um, does help to let people know that where they are. So, but one of the things that has been an issue is that those curbies, usually people don't take them up off of the street in time, or if you're riding down like on Button Road, there are a lot of houses that are on Button Road. People fly by, the wind blows over the trash can, the trash is in the road. So those type of things. And maybe it just overall with these type of programs and marketing enforcement will be key. Um, you know, we don't always want to, we want to kind of, how can she, how, she uses, what is it, a scaffold and not a um,
And not a sledgehammer.
Yeah, she, she uses a scaffold and not a sledgehammer. Some, we're gonna have to start using a scaffold. It would be nice, using a scaffold to kind of pretty much let people know, take your trash cans up. So the trash won't be all over the street and stuff like that. So I am looking forward, again, kudos to the Public Affairs Department. Thank you for bringing this on, and I'm here to cheer you on. Thank you.
All right, the chair recognizes Councilwoman Bell.
Congratulations. This is a much-needed campaign throughout our city. Um, many of you know, we participate in several community cleanups and it's a lot of work. So kudos to your team for this wonderful beautification campaign. We definitely need it, and this could not have come at a right on time, because again, as Councilwoman Williams Brown mentioned, we've been going through many emails for the last couple of days regarding this. Definitely, many of my colleagues have already mentioned um, and asked a lot of the questions as far as the timeline, the budget, making sure that we not only incorporate our businesses and plazas, because that seems to be a lot of the challenge that we have, but making sure that we also reach out to the organizations, um, Go Green Communities, the Adopt the Road, um, Adoptees, because this is what they en- enjoy doing on a weekly basis. Um, I'm just, I'm here for it. I'm looking forward to it. We're gonna clean up and getting out here. And as Councilwoman Gomes say, I will wear my T-shirts um, as we clean up and pick up. And so again, thank you all for this, this initiative, this campaign. I'm here for it. So thank you.
All right, the chair recognizes Dr. Rowe.
Thank you so much. Um, I won't reemphasize everything that our colleague, our colleagues have said, but a couple of things stand out. Um, as we mail out these business licenses, that's a good time to kind of let them know about our campaign and whatever messaging, kill two birds with one stone. I also think um, as it relates to code enforcement, as they look at all of our commercial corridors, I think if they focus on those parking lots that need to be repaved in the parking lot islands, because a lot of them are shrubbery or they don't have ground cover, those are the small things, but that's the attention to detail that really makes things look really good. Now, that's a good opportunity. And um, every martyr bus stop has a number sign to it, and that's how you call in and of course, get them to clean up. I think we need a map for our city, and I think we empower our community by letting them know, so they can also call when they see that the trash is not being picked up. Um, because I do it a lot on Cascade, but I want everybody to know, so that when they see it, they can call and complain. Because that is not our purview, but it, it, it definitely affects the aesthetics of the area. And um, I know we're saying we're working what we have, but we gonna have to put some money to this. Um, and I think we also need to look at, after going to the facade grants, we need to do more of that. I was very excited. I thought it was very impactful. And to see the businesses, you could, it just elevated the businesses. So it also will elevate our commercial corridor. So to the extent that, I know that's not true, I'm just putting it out there. We gotta find some monies for more of that. I think it makes a huge impact. And I'm not going to even go there. You know how many times I asked you about this as well. So uh, kudos, job well done. Thank you.
The chair recognizes Councilwoman Willis.
Thank you for rolling out this campaign, but you know, I'm gonna keep it real. This is another campaign. Over eight years that I have been here, we rolled out a Go Green campaign, beautification campaign. We can't even find the bus, they wrapped. Um, we had a campaign where we had Comcast come in and put sensors in trash cans, and they're supposed to notify us when to empty the trash cans. Uh, Marty does not have trash cans at every bus stop. Uh, we, some of us, some of the long timers went in our budget and were putting trash cans all around the city, trying to encourage people to put trash in the trash cans. And Public Works got upset, because they said we were creating more work for them, and they didn't have the bandwidth to empty the trash cans. So that's when they brought in Comcast, and Comcast was supposed to be giving us sensors to go on these trash cans to notify Public Works when the trash, went to empty these trash cans. I don't know what happened to that idea. Um, we have, not only, we have a shopping plaza litter ordinance, we have a shopping cart ordinance. I'm still seeing shopper carts everywhere in neighborhoods. People walking around pushing shopping carts full of trash. Um, we have a serious issue with loitering in our shopping plazas. Um, the Adopt the Road program is almost non-existent. People sporadically show up at these Adopt the Road programs and do photo ops, and we don't see them for years, or once a years. So what, my point is that we have a lot of stuff on the books that we need to enforce. We don't have to do a lot of education. We got people who just simply don't care about keeping our city clean. And we need to enforce the shopping plaza litter ordinance has been on the books since twenty twenty-three. We had uh, a da- a press release, we had education around that. We need to start hoping that, holding the shopping plaza owners accountable, not the businesses. The ultimate person responsible for keeping these trash cans clean, keeping the plaza clean, keeping the trash cans empty is the shopping plaza owner. The problem is, these people don't live in our city and they don't care. And we need to make them care by finding them. And I'm just asking if you will work with your staff to hold people accountable and enforce the book, the stuff that we have on the books. Um, we do need to put uniform trash cans across the city. I never put my name on a trash can, because I'm not trash, but some people did. And I would like to see uniform trash cans with our logo on them in areas where um, uh, we don't have trash cans. And I would like to revisit the sense, trash can sensor um, technology, so that staff can empty the trash cans. Um, I ride through other cities and I see where they have beautiful, large cast iron trash cans. And they're emptied, they're nice. We need that throughout our city. Um, I also would like to see, we gotta start from the bottom. And that's, we have to start with going into our schools and educating our kids. We can start in our camps. We have camps throughout the city. We need to create activity books and color books. We can hire companies to create a uh, what is it, get tra- we're here, put trash here, activity books. Um, we can hire a company to do that. And then make sure that we are giving these books out and having these activities in our summer camps, in our after-school camps. And even having these books available when we go into the schools for Career Day. Find out when Career Day is in all of our schools, so that council, police officers, uh, fire personnel can make sure they're taking these activity books and doing some type of activity, activities around keeping our city clean. Because once that is indoctrinated in our children, you will be surprised. They will remind their parents not to litter. And so I just think that's what we need to do. We need to double down on this Adopt the Road program. And we have people who have signed up and have their names on the Adopt the Road. If they're not adhering to the Adopt the Road obligation, then we need to, we need to take that back. Because we can, that's what the ordinance says. If they don't clean up within so many times or throughout the year, then they lose their privilege. People are not um, living up to their obligation.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman Willis, that's your time. We can come back.
Oh, I'll be back.
Okay, right. Um, I believe next was Councilman Sebastian. I'm sorry, did you want to respond? Go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead, sir. I agree wholeheartedly with you, um, Councilwoman Willis. I want to kind of address those things. Under City Manager Subodh, we've been impact-driven. That is our goal, to be impact-driven. And with that being said, this particular program is driven on education and implementation. And part of that is actually engaging those students where they are in those local schools and in the recreation centers where they come for those after-school programs and summer programs and things of that nature. This is why these receptacles will be placed in those locations to help change the habits of those young people. Two, we're looking at community engagement and feedback, because without the support of the community, we don't know where the program is going. How is it benefiting them? What can we do to pivot and change our direction to be ensuring that we're actually making this program work? And then lastly, we have the departmental engagement, which is why I listed on there, those seven departments, who are helping to move this program along from Public Works to ensuring that they're moving that, those areas that have been dumped in and litter and things of that nature. It's gonna take a whole bunch of departments to ensure that now we're moving the program forward under our impact-driven initiative, and that way we'll see the results that we're looking to, to achieve. All right, uh, Councilman Sebastian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you all for the presentation. So anything that takes care of Mother Earth and the environment makes me very happy. So uh, I want to thank you all for doing that, and this is to me just another initiative that um, proved that as a young city, we take the environment and our responsibility towards um, ensuring the survival of the planet. Really, we take it really seriously here. So thank you. Um, like several other things, I see this, as you've mentioned, pulling together a comprehensive plan for the city around this type of stuff. So thank you guys for that. Um, where we have actual street signs with some of this thing on it, did, did I, did I miss it? Because I'm thinking about places that are really rural, where you may have some dumping or littering hotspots that don't have buildings, right? Um, but they do have streets and they do have um, bushes where people feel very comfortable and just throw, tossing stuff out their window, windows of their cars. So um, hopefully we have some street signs that we would um, also install in those areas. Also, we have a bunch of boring parking lots around the city. So hopefully, we can not only get with the business owners, but the owners of the plazas. Um, we talk about planting trees. So for instance, if to make a plaza more, more um, beautiful, um, they may choose to give up a parking spot, so that it can be used as an island if it's an older plaza. I know that's what we do a lot um, now in some of the developments that we're doing. But if those older parking lots can be um, sort of um, redesigned when it comes to putting some of these islands, so we can get um, shrubs of trees planted in those, that would be great. Um, I didn't see anything about yard signs being mentioned, right? Um, I, I think having, again, yard signs, especially, you know, if your HOA has limits on yard signs that you cannot use yard signs, then a lot of citizens in the city don't live in HOAs. And a lot of citizens take pride um, in putting some of these things that would promote the beautification of, of the city. I see, for instance, in, in Chat Hills, there are some signs that, in a lot of peoples in these rural homes, that says, keep it rural, right? Um, but if we can have that same program implemented or design a yard sign with, that can be something that uh, we can use and promote. Um, I think that's it. That's all I have. So thank you guys very much for, for this again. And as Councilwoman Roar said, we know it's gonna cost some money, but I think we're, we're in for that. Okay?
Thank you, sir. Um, to address your concern, um, your, your comment a moment ago. So we're looking to implement what we call um, Yard of the Month Program throughout each of the seven districts in the city of South Fulton. And there will be nice, beautiful signs placed in the yard for that month for the winner of that particular program, bringing close to the code enforcement, to be able to enact that plan. All right, uh, we've heard a lot. We're gonna give our city manager a chance to respond before we do a second round with council.
Thank you. So we are going to be putting extra resources into the program. Um, a couple of things that you will see, it started here on Fulton Industrial, but you're gonna see more of our street sign replacements with the city logo. You will see, um, we are gonna keep pushing on the tree planting. We're closing in on that, the end of that. Um, we certainly are going to be pushing on signage, increased street sweeping frequencies, which has been Increased street sweeping frequencies, which has been, um, asked about a lot. Um, pressure cleaning on sidewalks, you asked about that. And that legislation hasn't been brought forward because we're waiting for the engineer to give us the lane mileage for the whole city. And then we'll, um, develop a plan over a series of years. So we're not ignoring it. It is part of this whole keep, you know, making, um, so foo so clean initiative. Um, and that will be coming forward. What does, what we would like to do is not just to pressure clean though, is to make repairs. So we'll take a section of sidewalk in every district and not just pressure clean, but make repairs, cut back trees. Ensure that lighting is, is adequate. We've had some great meetings with our utility partners. I'm excited about where they're going. And how, um, much they want to assist us with improving our lighting in the city. Uh, marketing, I think they have it covered. We're also gonna be trying to do some enhanced maintenance in our parks. To make sure they reflect the so foo so clean. Um, and recycling, starting at home in all our city facilities, right? So, um, we hear you. We know increased code enforcement is necessary. Um, we obviously want to try to get compliance. If we can't get compliance, then obvious, you know, we'll, we'll enforce with the stick. But you've all seen that movie, right? You, you, you do the fines, you gotta take them to municipal court, and then you have to go through that process. And it becomes long and drawn out. What we really want is cooperation. And we're hoping that we'll get, um, community pride and, and some of that, maybe some peer pressure. We understand that we'll have to enforce, but to the extent that we can get cooperation, I think it's a, um, it becomes a win-win. But we certainly understand we're gonna be, um, enhancing and including and increasing our code enforcement. And we thank you for the feedback and, um, look forward to seeing various parts and pieces of the program roll out. Thank you. Thank you, Shaheen. You can have a seat.
Oh, no.
No more applause.
We have, we actually have a few more rounds of questions. Stay, stay right there for us, sir. Um, or, or comments, starting the second time for our Mayor Proton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I would like to hear from Mr. Valenzuela, if he can please come up, our Public Works Director. Um, oh, well, there were a lot of things said, um. No, I understand, but I do want to hear from Mr. Valenzuela. Specifically about, um, po- what Public Works has done. I think that Public Works has been doing a lot, um, and their capacity to, um, expand to what was presented.
So, all the departments have participated and, you know, Public Works has been doing a phenomenal job with storm response. And all of which we're gonna bring at a different meeting. It's already five twelve. Mr. Valenzuela was not prepped to speak. And so if you have a specific question about Public Works, I'll be happy to answer it or get an answer for you. But I'm not prepared to bring up Mr. Valenzuela at this time.
Well, um, I mean, things were just said here about Public Works, and I do want to hear from Public Works.
If, i- i- if I could suggest, I, I think we have quite a few cases on our zoning calendar, so we want to get to that. Um, this is a great time to plug our State of the City. You will find out all of the great things that Public Works and all of our departments have been doing Thursday, May first. Uh, so stay tuned. We'll get a full, we're gonna have full updates from the city manager and as well as all of our departments. Uh, if, if we, if we, if we could do that, and then we'll just take this last thing number one. If we, if, I, 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 we're gonna take, not gonna forget you at all, Councilwoman Willis. But is that all right with you, Mayor Proton?
It'll be all right, but I am going to, um, I am going to publicly, uh, I don't like this because, um, many times when people ask questions and they speak. And they speak at length and they ask questions at length, um, they are accommodated. And, um, as Mayor Protem, I would like to hear from Public Works, but I will let it go in the interest of time and efficiency. But I am, um, articulating my displeasure and objection to not getting the information that I am requested on this day as, as everyone else has been allowed to. And with that, I yield, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Mayor Protem. Councilwoman Willis.
I'm gonna have to agree with Mayor Protem because you cut me off and you let other people just go on and on and on. And I tire myself because you, you constantly do that, but I'm gonna let it go. And I don't believe Mayor Protem should have to wait till May first to get an update on some of the items that were questioned and addressed on the stasis. And I think we all need to look up the purpose of a work session. Because a workshop session is just what it is supposed to be, to work through, um, items and have deliberations. And so, um, I'm going to ask and request again that we not only put these pails in the, um, the parking recreation, the par- um, facilities for our kids to see. But I'm requesting that we budget and hire a graphic designer or someone can, that can do a activity book specific to our city around litter and cleanup. And I can give you an example of one that was done, um, specific to another municipality. That's why I'm suggesting it, because I know it can be done. So that we, when we go to career days, we can take these activity books. And we can talk to our kids about how important it is to keep our, um, community clean. So that when we go to, um, there're gonna be vacation Bible schools around the city of South Fulton. And some of us may want to take some of these activity books to our vacation Bible schools. We really need to change the mindset and the culture. And the way you do that is with kids, through kids. Um, I will say again, I am requesting compliance and enforcement at this point. Um, I understand that you want to, um, encourage cooperation. But you can't force somebody who doesn't live in our community to cooperate with us. One of my shopping plaza owners live in Duluth. And they could care less. All they care about is getting the money from the tenants. They don't care about the laundering, the trash in, in the, in the, in the, um, parking lots and the full trash cans. So I, I think at this point, we need enforcement, we need code enforcement to step up and hold these shopping plaza owners accountable. Um, and if we need to talk with Attorney Kelly about how we can stiffen the fine to find them every day. Versus up to one thousand dollars one time. If we need to find them every day, we see litter in our shopping, um, plazas and our, the trash cans are full, then we can do that. Because these people don't live in our city and they don't care about cooperating or how trashy our community look. Because they don't have to walk by and see it every day. And I've been dealing with this for eight years. And I'm very appreciative of another campaign, but I say another campaign because that's what this is. And I, I just think that we just gotta be serious about it this time. And, um, if we all are serious and we do the things we say we're gonna do, I think it would be successful. But this is like the third campaign. And, um, and I do think we need to look at the adopt the road ordinance. Because some people have obligated to do things and they're not doing it. What I'm saying is, we have a lot of people, and that falls in Public Works Department. We have a lot of organizations who said they were going to adopt roads and signed up to adopt roads, and they are not fulfilling their obligations.
Can I respond?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, can I respond?
And I have. I reclaim my time too.
Oh, sure, I'm sorry.
And so I reclaim my time for three minutes you just did. But, um, and the motto, I would ask, Ms. Subedan, can we please get the numbers from these bus stops? So that we can call the bus, can we could call this, because they contract people to clean the, clean these bus stops. And all we gotta do is get the numbers and call. But the bus stops that don't have litter, I mean, that don't have trash cans. Can we look to put trash cans at those bus stops, uniform trash cans? And with the sensors that will notify us when they're full and need to be cleaned. Thank you. I yield.
So, every single thing that everybody suggested, I've written down, including the things you've suggested. Nobody's pushing back. Um, these are all great suggestions. And, I mean, I don't want to waste people's time and read everything back, but every single thing, every single suggestion that you made, I've written it down. Including a to-do list for the staff. So, you know, we, we are bringing this presentation to get your input. With your input, we can, you know, now roll it out as a complete program. And I think, I think we have heard you and every single thing that you already said, we've written down, I've written down. To ensure that our program is multifaceted and meets the council's needs as well as the community's needs. This is not, it's not just our program. We're just framing it. We wanted your input. That's why we're here today. And the goal is to flush it out and then roll it out as a complete program. So, um, everything you said, you know, enforce what's on the books. Need to hold plaza owners accountable, uniform trash cans, large ones. The trash can sensor technology, we need to investigate to see if that's still, um, something we can incorporate. Activity books for kids incorporate with schools on career days. Anti-littering signs need to be incorporated. That was the next speaker. Um, a comment about parking lots and yard signs. So, and that was, you know, everything you all said before is on my list.
All right, uh, you're, you're fine. Uh, thank you. Um, Mr. Clerk, would you? Oh, they have items. They have gifts. Awesome. Mr. Clerk, while, while, um, here you, here you, here you go, sir. I see you. Could we all hold up our shirts for Kasai? Mr. Clerk, could you go ahead and put my time up? I'm, I'm gonna close this out with a few comments. You can start it. All right, so, uh, just, just to close this out, thank you all for the presentation. Um, I want to address a couple of things. Number one, I do think in general, uh, and psychologists agree that we get better long-term behavior modification through positive reinforcement versus negative reinforcement. So, I think as we build, uh, the brand of our city and civic pride and who we are. Our citizens will be, um, the best enforcers, not only for visitors, but for their own children and for themselves. As, uh, City Manager and I have talked about, very often, the people that I see throwing stuff out the car windows are not children. They are adults. Uh, and then there's, I, I, I do, I do just want to speak to this issue of, of moderation. This is a very challenging group to moderate. Uh, if you all see these clocks here in front of you, I don't keep the time. The clerk keeps the time. And when the time runs out, I just note that the time has run out. You all, I think, can see the clocks, uh, facing you as well. So, uh, I really try to do this as equitably as possible. Also, uh, for the entire, at least for the entirety of this year. I don't think that I've ever allowed a staff person to be brought up without the city manager's consent. Um, we do have a city charter, which I am often reminded about, and we are not allowed to direct city staff. So we do have to direct our questions to, uh, Ms. Suadan. So me not allowing, uh, staff members to come up and be questioned by council, that's not even in my purview. So I just want to be clear that I, I really am trying to, uh, move this along as efficiently and as equitably as possible. And with that, Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
Next item is executive session if necessary.
All right, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session or simply break. Or, oh, no, actually, we have a five o'clock zoning hearing. Is that correct? Um, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
All right, it's been properly moved and adjourned. I will now call to order our special call meeting for zoning and alcohol licenses. I'm sorry, let's carry that vote. Uh, let's do it by show of hands. People got their hands up already. That's awesome. All right, now I will call to order the special call meeting for zoning and alcohol licenses. Everyone, please make sure that you, uh, I'm sorry, the, my colleagues up here, please make sure that you go to the next, uh, item in civic clerk. So that you'll be, you'll be able to get into the queue, uh, to speak. And with that, Mr. Clerk, please sound the roll.
It's the roll call for the five o'clock alcohol zoning public hearing, April eighth, twenty twenty-five. The Honorable Catherine F. Forile, District One.
Present.
The Honorable Carmen Lita Gums, District Two.
Present.
The Honorable Helen Z. Willis, District Three.
Present.
The Honorable J.C. Sebastian, District Four.
Present.
The Honorable Keosha B. Bell, District Five.
Present.
The Honorable Natasha Williams Brown, District Six. The Honorable Linda B. Pritchett, District Seven.
Here.
And the Honorable Mayor Khalid. Mr. Mayor, you have a call.
All right, please sound at the first item.
First item on tonight's public hearing agenda is a public hearing regarding the Community Development Block Grant substantial amendment. This will be presented by Anisha Nicholas, Director of Grants Department. Staff, please bring up that presentation.
There we go. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Anisha Nicholas, as mentioned. Um, a relatively new grants director, and it's a pleasure to meet all of you, um, mayor, council members. Um, that being said, I have no gifts. Um, however, however, we're proposing, um, to amend our annual action plan for the Community Development Block Grant for the twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, um, allocation. Um, in the amount of about a mi- a million, a little over a million dollars. And hopefully it's just as impactful. Um, that being said, there we go. Okay. I am new to the city. Keep that in mind, learning the electronics. Um, so today we will be discussing, um, kind of going a, a brief overview of the CDBG program. Um, we're gonna discuss eligible activities and how it feeds into our proposed reallocation amounts. Um, we're gonna discuss the citizen participation timeline because it is a mandate by HUD. And then we're going to have an opportunity for public comment. So the city of South Fulton became a CDBG entitlement community in twenty twenty-one. Um, to date, um, we received four allocations. Um, CDBG is federally funded, and to become an entitlement community, um, part of the ask is to create, um, um, part of the ask is to create, um, an annual action plan as well as a consolidated plan. So, the goal of the Community Development Block Grant is essentially to provide decent housing, a suitable living environment, and better economic opportunities, all in support of the national objectives, um, which are to benefit low and moderate income persons, to aid in, uh, the prevention of slumming blight, and essentially to address, um, an urgent community development need. Um, that being said, um, so we discussed, we, I mentioned low to moderate income. So, the HUD income limits, um, essentially dictates what low and moderate income, where low and moderate income persons fall. Um, the table that you see there just gives an idea of when household members from one to eight members in the household, if you look at the eighty percent, um, column, it gives a sense of where they fall. Um, persons or household members essentially cannot exceed that amount, um, in order to qualify for, um, assistance through the CDBG program. So eligible activities include, um, land acquisition, um, public facilities improvements, and we'll discuss a little bit more of those in depth, how it feeds into the proposed reprogramming. There's also public services, I'm not gonna go through all, but just kind of highlighting, there's the home ownership rehabilitation, and there's economic development activities that are also eligible activities of the Community Development Block Grant program. So, as I mentioned before, the city has about a little over a million dollars in CDBG funding that's available right now. Um, the activities that are currently funded, um, through the program are outlined in the table presented before you. They include blight reduction and neighborhood revitalization, public facilities, um, fair housing, we have economic development, um, as well as planning and administration. You'll see housing rehabilitation added because that's what we're proposing to reallocate some of the funding to. Um, so the column where you see proposed reprogramming, that is the amounts, um, that we would like to move to those particular items, um, to essentially maximize impact of the funding and to address the preservation of affordable housing in the City of South Fulton. So, the twenty twenty-four same, essentially the same allocation and the same distribution amounts. Um, in a nutshell, we're proposing two hundred thousand, um, for senior rehabilitation program. It would be the first pilot program, um, the City of South Fulton will be, um, essentially launching. And the second one would be, um, public facilities. You'll see, um, there's about eight hundred, eight hundred and twelve thousand that we've allocated to public facilities, uh, more specifically for parks and recreation, and we'll discuss, or I'll give you an outline of some of the, um, activities that we're proposing to use the funds for. So, for the senior rehabilitation program, again, the goal is to support the preservation of affordable housing as well as to support the city's senior population. Um, right now, for, by HUD's definition, seniors that would qualify for the program must be sixty-two years of age and older. Um, eligible homes, it must be owner occupied, and we're only targeting single-family homes. The income criteria that ties back to, um, the table that I provided, folks that would qualify for the program would naturally have to, um, align with the income thresholds. Uh, the max grant award amount, um, it would be twenty thousand. Um, and then there will be an additional five thousand that we're estimating for project delivery fees, which would be inclusive of inspection costs, environmental fees, as well as the actual cost for the consultant that will be leading the construction management side of the program. Uh, for rehab activities, um, we're proposing, um, roof repairs, HVAC, ADA, essentially accessibility, um, items, um, health and safety, inclusive of electrical plumbing, and probably even weatheri- a weatherization. Um, so those are the things that, um, we've researched. Um, part of what we would like to do is essentially piggyback off of the county's established program. Um, right now, we are building capacity within the Grants Department, and in order to launch the program within a relatively, um, short timeframe, um, having that support or, uh, 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 establish infrastructure in place will help the city to implement it in a timely manner. Um, that being said, with the funding that we have available, um, per HUD requirements, though we have seven years to utilize CDBG funding, uh, for timeliness, we must, um, expend a certain amount of funding each year. Um, so right now, part of the process that we're going through is to get the proposed amendment, um, approved so that we can submit it to HUD and we can begin the implementation efforts. I know there were some questions asked in relation to, I'm gonna go back a slide. In relation to the senior rehabilitation program, what I can confirm is that we do have fifty-six, um, City of South Fulton residents on the waiting list right now. Each district, um, has, um, members or, or applicants on that list. As far as the eligibility criteria to be added to the waitlist, from my experience, nothing has been confirmed as yet. I'm still waiting for confirmation, but from my experience, to be added to a waiting list, you would have to be essentially, um, deemed eligible and approved by application. But again, that confirmation will be provided at a later date. And then lastly, for the parks, facilities improvement, um, we're proposing to do improvements at Burdette and Creel Park. Um, you'll see the activities listed there. Um, it's more so, again, targeting just playground improvements. And the target area map gives you an idea of the areas in pink, um, red, those are the areas that will be targeted with CDBG funds because we must, um, per- perform those projects in areas where they're fifty-one percent or more LMI for folks. So, our timeline, we're in the thirty-day public comment period, this is the first public hearing, and we intend to bring it back to the council on the twenty-second for final adoption and then submission to HUD. Um, this concludes my presentation, uh, again, hopefully it was as impactful, and the floor is now open for any comments.
All right, the chair recognizes Councilwoman Williams Brown.
Thank you, Mayor, um, and thank you for the presentation. My only question was about, um, how the money is being moved out of categories into others, and I see that blight reduction is being zeroed out. Um, however, as you know, we have a lot of houses that we are demolishing. I think each, each one of us gets like one or two houses per year. I just, I want to be sure that that money that's being moved is not going to impact that partic- that, that program of, of tearing down the dilapidated houses.
No, we decided not to use CDBG money for, um, for demolitions, that's gonna be done out of general fund.
Thank you.
Mayor, I did want to respond very briefly to that.
Go ahead.
Um, we have been working very closely with code enforcement and, uh, Mr. McClendon, the CDRA Director, as far as honing in our nuisance and abatement process. So although the, um, funds may be zeroed out for that, we've been very aggressively pursuing, um, the blight in the community, encouraging, um, the people, when they come to municipal court, to abate any type of nuisance or blight. And if they don't, then we will, as the city, will step in to either demolish or abate the nuisance and then subsequently file a lien for the, um, costs that we incur in order to recoup those funds. So although that may give you pause, I do want to let you know that that program is still continuing, um, with collaboration from the City Attorney's Office and CDRA.
Thank you.
All right, Dr. Rowe.
Oh, thank you. Um, as you know, I've been asking about senior rehab, so thank you, thank you, thank you. I think this is a, um, a move in the right direction. I did have a couple suggestions out for your consideration as it relates to things I've heard in terms of, uh, issues, and even some we've experienced at the city, to look at eligible uses for the rehab to deal with windows, mold remediation, um, some kind of siding or exterior, because I know some of the older homes, they have that old wood siding and it, you know, it's, it's deteriorated. And so I think those are some of the challenges. So if you could look at those areas, I think, based on the calls I've had, these are, think, you know, concerns people had or they didn't have the ability to address.
Did you have a response, or?
No, we, we understand.
Okay, perfect, uh, Councilwoman Willis.
Thank you. What is the, um, threshold for seniors? You said that they had to meet an income threshold. Do you know what it is?
So, it's, it will be the same income threshold across the board, so that table that I provided.
Okay.
It's, um, they can't exceed that eighty percent column.
The eighty percent column, so that isn't this, I missed it, I stepped out, okay. Okay, the other question is, I did receive, um, feedback from the county, and what they said is that their annual budget is approximately eight hundred and seventy-four thousand, um, for the, uh, and they prioritize home, prioritize home base, um, on the application, and they have two hundred persons on the waiting list needing repair for the overall county. Do you all get that list from Fulton County to, to make sure? Do you all get that, are they providing you that list of who they are providing assistance to, to make sure that we're not duplicating efforts?
So Anisha was able to get that list of the people who are on the waiting list currently? And that was what she was saying earlier. If they're on the waiting list, it means they're more than likely qualified. Once this part of our program is approved and the change is made, then I think we would want to start with people who have already gone through the process and who are already on the waiting list.
And, and just to add, it's a total of fifty-six City of South Fulton residents.
In that, in, in the two hundred thousand, because not all of these people in Fulton County are City of South Fulton. So the fifty-six are the only ones of this two hundred is City of South Fulton, that's what you're saying?
That's correct.
That's on the county's waiting list?
That's on the county, um, we had conversations with the county as well as their, um, procurement service provider. So based on my confirmation, it's fifty-six.
I just would ask Ms. Suwadan, not, not saying you're doing anything wrong, that we just kind of put some effort around, making sure we confirm those addresses, because we did have a hiccup bef- just, I think it predated you around people getting things they weren't supposed to get, that did not actually live in our city. And so I just asked that you put a hawk out on that, that's it. Uh, and I'm not saying you're not doing your job, I'm just saying we had that issue. So when you go through things, you try to learn not to make the same mistakes. Uh, thank you. And I forward this email to you, um, Ms. Suwadan. Uh, the other thing that I would like to ask that you all, if possible, can take into consideration is, um, yard tree removal for our seniors, can that, is that eligible use? Because I get a lot of, I get a lot of calls from seniors sometimes when they, they, uh, have like dead trees or they have, um, um, a tree that's about to fall, that's about to impact their home, impact their neighbor's home, and they don't necessarily have the funds to hire a tree removal company to come and remove the tree. Is that something that's eligible?
Um, not with CDBG funding, however, um, I'm aware that we have the Code Cares program, um, and I believe that will fall under that purview.
Or when we have had storm and trees have collapsed in their yards and they can't, they can't afford to have somebody come and chop the tree up and remove it, you're saying that doesn't qualify for CDBG either?
No, um, we can explore additional disaster-related grant opportunities, um, but again, I think that will fall under the Code Cares program.
Okay, and so, Ms. Suwadan, we allocated money to more, I, I'll ask another question because I know you sent us an email with, about Code Care. I think that is it I have concerning CBDG grants. I just want to make sure we are communicating with the county, we're getting their list, and we're making sure that these people that, um, the people that are eligible are living in our city. Thank you.
That wasn't the last speaker, there were more speakers earlier.
Yeah, I showed Councilmember Bell. Councilmember Bell was the only other speaker.
All right, uh, so, uh, quickly, I wanted to say, um, I wanted to ask, i- i- it came up, but for, but it's, this isn't really the place, but for future meetings, uh, Madam Attorney and Madam City Manager, I would love to just hear about, uh, the next steps. We, you know, we created this blighted property program to address and remediate blight, and once we have done that and the property sits fallow, like, is there, like, some way that we can obtain it? Can we use it? You know, some cities, they're using it for firefighters or parks workers, whatever, but just, I would, I would love to hear about that in the future, I don't know the last about what I, I would love to hear about that in the future, and, um, Madam City Manager, you and I were talking about, you know, the, the rising costs of everything in this new economy, with tariffs starting tomorrow, construction prices will probably be going up, um, more. So for, for the senior rehab, have we anticipated any of that? Have we included that? Is that maybe why you moved some of the money out of the, the budget?
Yeah, so you'll remember last week, I shared that there was an administrative cost on our original plan. We did away with that, so we're gonna dedicate, you know, the majority of the funding for the two programs, the, the parks and directly for the, um, seniors. I did caution, when we had a grants group, I did caution everybody to say this is a pilot program. We will not be able to do a lot of people, um, because of the rising cost of repairs, but this is our toe in the water to kind of see how this works in the City of South Fulton and, um, really alleviating and addressing some of these seniors that have been on the list for a long time. Um, we don't want, want to supplant what the city, what the county does, we want to supplement what the county does, so we may need your help with that, um, to make sure that because we have our own program, the county decides that they're not gonna serve us anymore. What we want to do is supplement the county's program, and I'm hoping that's the way it will work out. But at, um, two hundred people on their waiting list, eight hundred thousand dollars, sounds like a lot of money, but serving fifteen cities is not gonna go very far, it's not at all.
Thank you. Uh, all right, Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
Mr. Mayor, this was a formal public hearing, so you need to open and close it.
Okay.
Even though we don't have any speakers.
Gotcha, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. There are no speakers for or against this item. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and now let's sound the next item. And if someone from IT could just come check my laptop, I, I can't see the speakers, so I'm relying on the screen because they're not showing up here.
That brings us to the alcohol license rezoning variance and modification cases for presentation and public hearing only. The first is a public hearing for an alcohol beverage license application by Roosevelt Food and Gas LLC, doing business as Chevron Extra Mile, has been submitted and is requesting approval for a change of ownership for the retail sales of beer and wine at forty-two eighty-five Roosevelt Highway, South Fulton, Georgia, three oh three four nine. This is located in Council District Three. This item was held at the March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five council meeting.
All right, go ahead, sir.
Good evening, everyone. The applicant for Chevron Extra Mile, located at forty-two eighty-five Roosevelt Highway, South Fulton, Georgia, three oh three four nine, has met all requirements for alcohol license due to a change of ownership. All applicant fees have been paid in full, inspection's completed, and a public safety plan has been submitted and approved by staff. This location currently operated under a temporary alcohol license, staff recommends approval by council.
All right, thank you for, uh, some of the taller speakers, you all may have to pick that mic up when you, when you come up, it's fine.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to, uh, go ahead and open the public hearing for this item. Are there any speakers for or against, Mr. Clerk?
The applicant is present, we did not receive any other comments, cars, and support or opposition.
All right, uh, you may come forward. First, start by stating your name and address, you will have ten minutes, you may want to reserve, so you don't have to use that entire ten minutes. By the way, you may want to reserve some balance of your time for rebuttal. Your time starts now.
Good afternoon, my name is Lalet Sokeani, I'm representing the location that was just called out.
All right, did you have any?
I, I'm just here, I'm happy to answer any questions if you all may have.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and, there are no speakers against, you said? I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing and open it up for questions, beginning, as is always our custom, with the district representative, Councilwoman Willis.
This is the Chevron, um, Roosevelt, is it the one on Ben Hill? So there was a jail, and then there is, when you go, uh, Roosevelt, there's Ben Hill, and then there's another gas station on the right. Or, is it that, is it that?
So, so this is the one, uh, close to Welcome All Road, right across the street from the railway tracks. It used to be a Valero, it was recently rebranded, upgraded to, uh, Chevron, like, a couple months ago.
Okay.
We're still transitioning, uh, to Chevron at the moment.
Okay, I know what you said, it used to be Valero.
Right.
So, had, did you all do a security assessment? Officer?
Yes, ma'am, we did.
So has he complied with his recommendations from the security assessment, like tying into fuses, cameras? And, you know, I'm, the only thing I have had issues with, with some of the gas stations is the loitering. And, and so the only way that we can really control the loitering is if they agree with the security recommendations. And I know most of your security recommendations are asking them to tie into your real-time crime system. And so my question is, did you make a recommendation, and has, has that been done?
I will make sure that I get what my lieutenant on the recommendation for fuses, but I do not believe he signed up, but I will, um, we will all follow up with that.
So let me defer this to the next council meeting, um, so you can get with him on getting that done, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions? All right, seeing and hearing none, we will be voting on this at the April twenty-second meeting? Oh, she, we're recommending for, I'm sorry. Okay, um, there's a motion for a deferral to the, wait, I'm sorry. This is a hearing, and we're not voting until the twenty-seventh, but you want to defer past the twenty-seventh to the May meeting?
I'm fine. If, let me say this, I would ask and encourage compliance before the next, um, by the next council meeting, so we won't have to defer at that meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'm not trying to be anti-business, but you know, the, we, you know, the tort form is in play now. So when people get hurt at these businesses, it's limited to what people can do. So we really need y'all to comply with our security recommendations.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
So, so if I, if I may ask, you, you're suggesting me to get online with the, the system that's kind of like give, gives access to law enforcement in real time? Is that what you're suggesting?
What I, what I'm recommending is that you follow the recommendations that they have outlined to you. Um, sometimes what owners believe it is, is not really what it is. So I'm asking you to, um, follow the recommendations outlined in the security plan for the protection of your business and also to, to, for the protection of the public. Um, because if they can see what's going on from the real-time crime center on the outside of your business, then that also protects you.
Sure.
Because you don't have to worry about, you know, um, hiring extra security, or, and then people won't be, people will be protected because they can see what's going on. If there's unnecessary loitering, or if there's something else going on on the outside, you know, they can see that, and they can respond. So all I'm asking, so we won't, you know, have to delay this, is to just get with the security officer and follow their recommendations.
Okay.
It's not a bad thing.
No, no, I, I agree.
All right, thank you so much. Appreciate you helping keep city of South Fulton safe.
Thank you.
All right. We'll be sure to have him sound up by the end of this week.
All right, Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
That brings us to item B, this public hearing, an alcohol beverage license application by fifty-two forty-five GR Business LLC doing business as Quick Pick Food Mark, has been submitted and is requesting approval for a change of ownership for the retail sales of beer and wine at fifty-two forty-five Welcome All Road, South Fulton, Georgia, three oh three four nine. It's located in Council District Three. This item is deferred from the March twenty-fifth council public hearing.
All right, following my meeting with the business owner of Quick Pick located at fifty-two forty-five Welcome All Road, South Fulton, Georgia, three zero three four nine, has agreed to enroll in our fuses safety program. Additionally, he clarified that the business does not operate twenty-four hours, instead closes at twelve A.M. The owner has confirmed that his establishment is employed, and quick, I'm sorry, employees certified armed security guards. The license and permit unit safety plan will be updated quarterly.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. Mr. Clerk, do we, I see the applicant is here, do we have any other speakers?
Uh, we did not receive any, uh, comment cards in support or opposition.
All right, uh, you can come forward, applicant, I think you've heard, uh, how this goes. You have ten minutes, you don't have to use all the time, you may reserve some of the balance of your time for rebuttal, and please start by stating your name and address.
Last time also I wanted to speak, but I was scared. First time I, I'm speaking is front of you people, okay? When I got this store.
First, I'm sorry, please give us your name and address.
My name is Phiroz Dawdani, and I own the store, I'm the owner of the store.
And your, and your address?
Yeah, and my address is fifty-two forty-five Welcome All Road, Atlanta, three zero three four nine.
Go ahead.
When, the day I took the store, on the twenty-eighth of December, before that, I was monitoring the store very closely for a couple of days, at least a couple of weeks, then the first thing I cut off was they were operating for twenty-four hours. After looking at all locations and all whereabouts and this and outside the building, first day I closed the store at twelve o'clock at night. I cut off my business, I cut off my income, I cut off everything. Till now, from that December twenty-eighth till now, I've closed at twelve o'clock at night. So I am very much in business, inside the business, outside the building also, because I love my community and I'm here to serve the community. I just don't want to make money. At the same time, I want to grow with community. So I request you, this is not my submission, and I also signed whatever they have recommended me to that fuses that officer had come, I showed him everything, all angles, outside the building, inside the building, and further anything he wants me to add, I've done everything according to me, and I'm submitting everything for you.
All right, thank you. Are there any speakers against? Seeing and hearing none, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing and go to council questions and comments, beginning, as is always our practice, with the district representative, Councilwoman Willis.
Thank you. Um, you know that feeling, you said you were scared because you weren't allowed to come up and speak?
No.
Well, that's, I, I, I said, that's, I want you to understand, that's the same feeling our residents feel when they walk up to a store and there's people outside loitering, loitering and, and doing lawlessness. That's the same fear that people who live here in our community feels. So remember that feeling when our recommend, when our officers are recommendate, recommending that you put certain security measures in place, so people who come and patronize your business can feel safe. Now, we've had a lot of issues at that business, and so that's why I'm doubling down on what needs to happen to protect your business and to protect patrons. This is a win-win. We want you to, we want you to be able to be a successful business owner, but, but, but we want people to feel safe when they come and patronize your business. I don't want you to have to just sell real strong soda.
Okay, now can I say something?
So, so I would, I would like for you to get your alcohol, beer and wine license. But we also want you to follow the recommendations of our police department, so that our patrons can feel safe. Officer, have they complied with your recommendations?
Yes, ma'am, we're waiting on to update our security safety plan, um, everything with fuses, but not security. But he did state today that he will have security, um, at his store.
Friday and Saturdays, business days, thirty evening, four to ten. And again, ma'am, I myself will be on business on those days, because I got one more location in Fairburn also. So I take care, I'll be there in this location round the clock, most of the time.
I care about regional safety, but I really care about the city of South Fulton's safety and the people who live in the community's safety, and we've had a lot of mishaps. Um, you said he did comply with the fuses?
Yes, ma'am, last week, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Um, um, I'll see you at the next council meeting, and, um, I'm looking forward to our officers saying that you have one hundred percent complied with our recommendations. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
That brings us to, excuse me, item C, it's a public hearing for case M twenty-four dash zero one one, an application by Apex Sandtown LLC, care of Wilson, Brock and Erby LLC, requesting a modification to petition number two thousand six Z dash zero zero four zero to modify conditions one through five to change the site plan in MIX in the Sandtown Overlay District to develop seven thousand square feet of commercial and office space, a hundred and seventeen single-family detached and townhome residential units at zero Camelton Road. It's located in Council District One. Side item was, uh, deferred in January twenty-eighth and then February twenty-fifth, uh, council public hearings. Staff recommendation is denial, staff?
Thank you, um, I move to defer case M two four dash zero one one and case Z two five dash zero zero three to May thirteenth. Um, both of these applicants are working with the community to change their existing site plan to bring down the density, and so that's gonna be the last deferral for me if I can't get it together.
What was the date?
Uh, May thirteenth.
All right, it's been properly moved and seconded. Uh, any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, uh, we'll take this vote in the queue. All right, all right, that motion was approved unanimously. Please sound the next item.
That brings us to item E, which I believe may be a withdrawal. Uh, it's case Z twenty-four dash zero three one, U twenty-four dash zero one eight, and CB twenty-four dash zero one two. It's a public hearing, an application by Turnstone Group LLC, care of Steve L. Jones Partner, Taylor English Duma, LLP, question rezoning from MIX to C two and a special use permit to develop an extended stay hotel at seven seven eight five Ella Lane. The applicant also requests concurrent variance to table four dash four to reduce the required landscape strip to three point six feet. It's located in Council District Seven. Staff's recommendation is approval, approval conditional and denial of the concurrent variance and planning commission recommendation is, uh, or deferral to April.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Uh, the applicant for case zero twenty-four dash zero three, thirty-one, U twenty-four zero one eight, and CB twenty-four dash zero one two has indicated uh, in writing that they wish to withdraw this matter, they will be refiling at a later time. So at this time, we will ask council to move to withdraw. All right, the chair will entertain a motion, followed by discussion.
I move to withdraw case Z two four dash zero three one dash U two four dash zero one eight dash, I mean, C two four dash zero one two as recommended by staff.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All right, let's take this vote in the queue.
That motion was approved unanimously to defer seven zero. To, to withdraw, I'm sorry. Withdraw, that was to withdraw, I'm sorry.
All right, uh, and I'm sorry, just for the edification of the public, how soon can they bring this back, Madam Attorney, after the withdrawal?
Immediately.
Okay. All right, uh, I think we're at the end of our agenda, I will, no, we have more, I'm sorry. Did you, please, sound the next item.
That brings us to item F, it's case Z twenty-five dash zero zero five, it's a public hearing, an application by Seala Prop Incorporated, requesting a rezoning from C one in the Old National Overlay District and R five A in the Old National Overlay District to MIX at seventy-one eighty-five Old National Highway to develop townhomes and commercial building on eleven point six six acres. It's located in Council District Seven. Staff recommendation is denial, planning commission recommendation is denial.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Reginald McClendon, Managing Director of Community Development and Regulatory Affairs. Um, allow me to say very quickly, um, just in case I don't have another opportunity to address you, um, May the thirteenth might be a very long meeting. I think we have nine cases scheduled on our April planning commission calendar, um, because planning commission does not meet in the month of May, um, which is because city council does, does not meet in the month of June. Uh, so planning commission takes a, a, um, a, a month sabbatical, um, prior to you, you all's month sabbatical. Um, so I, I just want you all to be prepared, uh, for, um, the possibility that, um, we might have quite a few hearings on that May thirteenth date. Case Z twenty-five dash zero zero five is an application, uh, to go from the C one Limited Commercial District to the mixed, uh, use Old National Overlay District. Staff's recommendation is denial, planning commission recommendation is denial. The staff's recommendation is based on the site plan that was presented, uh, in this particular case, um, not, um, being in conformance with the city's regulations.
I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing for this meeting. Mr. Clerk, is the applicant present? Uh, he is, and are there any speakers for or against? I think I see at least one.
Yes, we have, uh, two cards in support and one in opposition.
All right, sir, uh, I believe you know how this goes, you want to start by stating your name and address. You will have ten minutes in total, you may want to reserve some of the balance of your time for your two supporting speakers, as well as rebuttal. Uh, after you've heard those in opposition, your time starts now.
Um, sorry, I'm tall. Good evening, uh, Honorable, good evening, Honorable Mr. Mayor and, um, members of the council. Thank you for your time this evening. My name is Charles Richards. I'm the engineer of record for the project, I represent the owner, who is also here tonight with Seala Properties. Um, we have been working through this process since November. Um, we have heard comments in the citizens' meeting, the CZ meeting. I apologize to staff, we have updated our site plan, it's with our presentation on the PowerPoint, thank you. Um, and we'll get to that, and so I'm gonna try to keep up with my time here. I want to leave time for any questions that anyone may have. Uh, there are, I'm projecting that there may be questions that will affect our owner financially, and so if there are those kinds of questions, I'll defer to him, and he's here willing to answer any and all of those questions as well tonight. Uh, next slide, please. Um, so just briefly, an overview, pretty much all already stated, the acreage, uh, we're hoping to do sixty-one units. All of the lots will be two thousand square feet, which is the, uh, what's required by the zoning for, uh, South Fulton. Uh, there will be a three-two-one, which in the housing industry, that's three bedrooms, two baths, one car garage. Townhomes, it will be two stories, a minimum of eleven hundred square feet, again compliant with all our ordinance, the, um, the city's ordinances, and a maximum of forty feet in height, also compliant. Also compliant, uh, to meet the MIX zoning, there is a office commercial building, so it serves both uses. Uh, conceptually 17,000 square feet. And I'm going to get to this further in the presentation. Uh, we request no variances whatsoever with this application. Uh, the MIX zoning does allow, uh, some variety on parking. So, and looking through the table of what's allowed in commercial and office, the range of parking is three spaces per thousand to five spaces per thousand. Um, it's kind of hard to know what exactly will be leased in that building. So our request is to just take the average and, and the parking be approved with this zoning at four spaces per thousand, which is my understanding how the MIX zoning works. It'll be whatever, uh, the council, uh, is comfortable with. It'd become part of, of the rezoning. Everything is interconnected by internal sidewalks, as is part of this zoning. Uh, there's sidewalks along the frontage of, uh, Old National. There's a 600 square foot clubhouse. That was one of the comments that came up in our meetings with citizens. And also there's outdoor playground and in compliance, uh, with the zoning. Next slide, please, the open space. Uh, fitment is kind of what I said in this slide. Uh, there's residential detached, single-family residences around this parcel. Um, there's a little commercial to the east. Uh, I take some quotes from the staff report. Proposed zoning district, uh, and density is supported by the future land used map. Further, um, this zoning, well, you can read the quotes there, it's compliant. It provides the, uh, um, apologize, I'm having trouble reading at this distance. Proposed requirements. Uh, no variances are requested. Um, we're trying to fit into what we understand is a regional live-work concept for this overlay district, which allows up to 20 units per acre. We're proposing 5.23 units per acre. Again, we feel like it's a good transitional mix of residential from the residential that it's around. And of course, we'll include the office commercial to be the MIX zoning. Um, all elements of the Old National Highway Overlay District will be complied with at the time of land disturbance permit. And actually, we will see that when we get to the updated site plan. Next slide, please. Again, everything we're proposing complies with the MIX zoning. Uh, zoning proposed is in conformity with the comprehensive plan. Proposed properties located in the regional live-work character area, which is intended to create, you know, and again, I won't read straight from the staff report to you all. Uh, but those are all things that, that shows our compliance. Next slide, please. During the meetings, uh, earlier meetings with citizens, we were still very much in conceptual. So we didn't have any elevations. This is the elevation of what that commercial building, uh, office building might look like. At this point, we're envisioning, um, more open window space on the lower level where the commercial units would be, you know, vendors like for their products to be able to be seen. And then offices upstairs. Uh, this would be, of course, a brick facade or, or brick, fully brick building, uh, to feed the tenure and timbre of the surrounding area. Next slide, please. Again, at the original meetings before meeting with you all, we did not have, uh, floor plans or elevations. That was something that was very much of interest. So we're, we're pleased to present those to the council here as well. Next slide, please. And these are just some examples of, of what the owner is, is proposing. Uh, open floor plan on the first level with family rooms. Um, and then three bedrooms up top with a nice, uh, master suite. Some of them with garden tubs, walk-in closets, um, foyer's with the closet to the entry, this kinds of thing. Next slide, please. These are some typical elevations. Uh, this reminded me of the first starter home that I bought. The developer said, you know, we have to, we can't have a B next to a C. And we can't have an A across the street from you. But of the various, there's actually six of these. I didn't put all of them up here. But of the various elevations to provide variety and, and to meet a good mix of, of the community looking good. Usually the developer will kind of give the homeowner a choice of a couple, two or three of these types of, how do you want the front of your house to look? And so I know some brick or stone accents was brought up in the questions. And so these, these, uh, next slide, please. These elevations do show that that's what's intended. Nope, there's one more slide. Next slide, please. Okay, I'm going to apologize that the last slide that was included, uh, was the site plan. In the staff report, there were, uh, comments about the zoning buffer and the, um, improvement setback landscape strip. The site plan has been revised. Those buffers are included around the perimeter of the property. The improvement, um, setback is interior to those. Uh, the 20-foot landscape strip along Old National Highway has been included with a 10-foot improvement strip as well. And, um, we did slide the units a little bit. There's only about three feet that we needed to slide them to accommodate those, uh, two things. The landscape strip and the improvement buffer. And, um, with your concurrence, we would hope that, uh, we could go ahead and start moving forward. I went a little over my six and a half minutes I allowed myself. So hopefully there is still time for questions and I'll yield. Thank you.
There are two minutes for the other speakers in support. You all may want to hold that time, that balance of your time for rebuttal. I do just do want to say that you don't get 10 more minutes for rebuttal. All right, so it looks like they're going to hold that. Uh, let's go to those in opposition, Mr. Clerk.
We did receive one card in opposition, Mr. Michael Venable.
The name is Michael Venable, 5720 Montali Circle. In addition to the concerns that are brought up by the community and the planning commission and with staff, this is a very, very hard sale. You know, I think I'm showing my age. I was there when the adjacent subdivision was developed. They wanted to do the exact same thing, place the commercial in front of the housing. That was vehemently opposed. And so in order to compensate, if you look at Stone Ridge, there are two sections. One is higher priced than the other. They took the part that was the commercial they were going to do and just compensated by making that a higher-priced, um, area. Looking at that subdivision and looking at what's being presented, this is stark. It, it's one thing to have a variety of housing. But when you go ground level to a top of, close to a top of a mountain, that, that's a really hard sale. And that's on one side. The other side, there is a power easement. All over the whole thing. You know, we just don't take into account environmental concerns when we come back and place people in housing. You know, this is probably, well, it's totally geared to someone just starting out. Not going to say they're desperate, but they're, they're, they're probably not going to have the resources with the attorneys and the other people to say, hey, this doesn't look quite, this is this, this is that. It's almost like we're preying on people. One-car garages. When have you ever seen any new houses with just one-car garages? Come on, I think, you know, we're taking this to the extreme and it shouldn't be. The commercial, I, 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 you know, I, I think we're wanting to do a mix, but we're really not prepared to do a mix. I know we have a lot of warehouses coming up. And, you know, I talked to several developers and, you know, whether you like it or not, they will say, okay, someone's probably going to want to see the building before they decide they want to lease. And, and that's unfortunate because you'll never know what comes about. Commercial, it's a little different. If you got a commercial person coming in, they're probably going to do the design before the building is built. This is a spec building. You have no idea who's coming, but more importantly, you do not know if anybody is coming. That's the last thing this carter needs, is a vacant property of that size. And you're trying to put people that are probably thrilled, maybe to get a place, they're going to have to drive by that first before you even get to your home. Okay, so you've got a possible vacant property in front. That's going to look real nice for the kids that want to play. One side, you have a power easement. It's going to be real nice for a family to play. Then you've got to look at the subdivision beside it. You know, they paid and they bought for whatever standard that was. And you can call it biased or whatever. They made an investment like that. I don't think they would find that appropriate to have that change of character right beside them. So we have to think of people itself. You know, I, I, you know, un-understand business. He wants to make this pass and go through. Probably said, okay, we got a better chance doing a mixed than, you know, c-straight commercial residential. But it's not their, it, it, it's not in their ramble what they've done. We're trying to make square peg pit into a round circle. I, I just do not think that this would be appropriate for this lot for both the courtesy of the surrounding community, for the environmental concerns that exist, and for the speculation of a two-story building right in the entrance of the property to where someone is trying to make a home. I, I just do not think this is appropriate for. And we also talked to the director. I mean, thi-this goes beyond just this case. We have repeatedly, as a community, gone to public hearings and community, you know, events to look at properties. And then we come here, oh, well, we made a change. This is not what we're doing and not here. This probably is not the things that were presented in the community meetings. You know, I understand things change and whatever. But I, I just think, you know, as a whole, you know, if somebody makes a change or, you know, changes zoning or site plans and things like that one, i-it just needs to automatically be deferred and, and come back again to, for the process to start over. But that's just a side note. With this one, for the environmental concerns, for the, the respect of the prospective homeowners and for the courtesy of the surrounding residents, I just do not think that this is an appropriate, um, zoning and an appropriate project for this lot as it is. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Other applicant and their supporters, you have about two minutes and four seconds to respond.
My name is Sean Griffin, 603 Newport Court in Locust Grove, Georgia. Uh, I'm the owner of the property. I've owned the property for about, uh, uh, between 20 and 25 years. And, um, I was looking at the property. I, I thank you for the point that you made, Mr. Honorable. Appreciate the point that you made because I, um, I was looking at this property. It's been zone C1 ever since I've owned the property. Even when, when it was Fulton County, then, then over into the city of South Fulton. And I was looking at this property thinking, okay, what can I do with this? I need to do something with it. I've owned it for all these years. And, um, I, it's on C1, I started thinking about the potential uses. And then I started studying the code to try to see what the best use would be for it under the commercial zoning and realized that the code actually says the, the, the property next door to it that Mr. Venable was referring to is, is a lower-density residential. And the property on the other side of it is a CVS and a self-storage facility, which are both commercial. And, um, I said, well, the, the zoning code says that the townhouses is a medium density. And it, it, the, the code even says that that's what you need for a transition between the lower-density residential and the commercial. So that's what made me decide to do townhouses, uh, on that property or seek a townhouse zoning because the code says it's the transition between the lower-density and the commercial. And that's what I wanted to be. I wanted to satisfy the, 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 the spirit of the code. And then we originally submitted this rezoning as townhouses only. It was, uh, the staff that asked us or, or recommended that it be, um, mixed-use because they, they wanted to see a mixed-use there. And that's when we went and added the, the, the retail to the front of the property. So to, to your point, um, that would be my preference, that it's all townhouses. But we submitted it as mixed-use with a commercial in the front because that's what the, the staff wanted to see, mixed-use there. Because apparently it's in an overlay district that, that requires mixed-use. Uh, there's a lot of retail there that would actually, in the area, that would qualify. The whole area is mixed-use, but, uh, apparently they wanted to see our property specifically mixed-use. So that's why the, the retail is on the front. So I just ask you to, um, I don't know how the, the process works, if it can actually be amended at this, at this meeting, but I would, I would just assume it'd be all townhouses. And hopefully that would satisfy some of Mr. Venable's, uh, objections about, uh, a retail site in the front of the townhouses. I mean, I think it would work, it would work fine with the, the retail there, but that wasn't, that wasn't our intention initially. We made that adjustment because of the staff. So anyway, I would just ask that you approve. And well, another thing that, that, uh, that, uh, Mr. Venable had mentioned was, um, that there was changes made after the community meeting. The changes that were made were, were relatively minor. There were, there were, there were technical things like a, a little more, um, buffer and, um, um, moving the, moving the buildings around us a little bit to create more buffer. So.
That, that's your time.
Okay, thank you.
There, there will be, uh, I think several questions from council, so you don't want to go too far. All right, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and open this up. Two questions and comments and from council beginning, as is always our practice with the district representative, Mayor Pro Tim Pritchett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, um, Mr. Venable brought up this issue of, of power easement.
Yes, ma'am.
How are you resolving that issue?
Well, there is a power easement on part of the property. And, uh, obviously we can't, we can't develop that into residences. So there won't be anything in that part of the property.
Okay, so, um, this is more of commentary because, um, you know, just to put things into context.
Yes, ma'am.
I lived right next door to this. I lived in Stone Ridge.
Okay.
Um, for a long time. And that property is a dirt road that four-wheelers will come through and come to the back of Stone Ridge, to where the clubhouse is. So they would run from the police and go through the dirt road into the back of Stone Ridge. Um, it's also a, a wooded, some of it is a wooded area where there have been homeless people that have set up tents. And, um, and at one point, many years ago, over a decade ago, um, there was an issue with someone that set a fire, um, there. It's just dirt and some bushes and some wooded, wooded area. So, um, that's what it is now. And it just is something that's just there, right? Like an ice sword. The, the surrounding communities, uh, South Hills looks very similar in the way that the houses are constructed. Uh, Carrington Point, which is in District Six, but across the street from District, District Seven, the houses look very similar in the way that they are constructed. Actually, there are duplexes. Um, I forget the name, uh, but they're right across the street on Best Sater Road. So I'm mentioning this because I know that Mr. Venable brought up- So I'm mentioning this because I know that Mr. Venable brought up the fact that he felt that, you know, you wanna see a quality product.
Yes, ma'am.
In the community. Um, we definitely wanna see a quality product. But at the same time, um, as you explained, this is, um, a transition from one type of housing to another.
But to commercial, to commercial.
Exactly. So, eh, people are always talking about the type of retail they want to see, um, not taking in consideration that to get to that type of retail, you have to have density. So to achieve that type of density, if it's not this type of project, it would be apartments. With retail, say, at the bottom, um, what have you. A lot of people don't want apartments, um, I'm not against any type of development where people need to live. Um, I have children that are, I have a son that's thirty, I have another son that's twenty-eight. Um, people have to live somewhere. Everyone's not gonna live in the biggest house and everyone's not gonna live in the smallest house. But, um, we, we just const- I, I constantly hear this, this same concern about an area that I lived in, in my district, knowing that my district has a var- a variety of housing, you know? Where I live today, I don't have a garage. So, you know, um, I don't put down any type of place that people can live if they wanna pay for that, you know? But, um, and we're open for business. We want people to, we want young people to live in, in South Fulton. Um, having this type of development, this is a walkable area. There's McDonald's down the street, there's gas station, there's CVS, you know, and we would like to see the area thrive. Um, lastly, my question to you is, like, the price point of?
We're looking at the beginning price point from, uh, say, two eighty to three hundred thousand, which would, uh, be supported by, uh, well, well by the working class. Uh, to qualify for that, according to the mortgage you got, you have to make, uh, between seventy and eighty thousand dollars a year in order to do that.
And is there any portion of it set aside for, um, affordable housing or for, I don't know, I forgot the term, um, where people work and workforce housing?
Well, it, it's all really considered workforce housing because of the, because of the price point and the income level, the seventy to eighty thousand dollar, uh, income level that it would take to qualify, to purchase those townhouses.
Okay, and as far as the covenants, uh, will you all be creating, you'll have an HOA, but a restriction on how many units can be rented versus owned? Because what we don't wanna s- what we really don't wanna see is it being a rental community per se. Um, you know, uh, South Fulton has about sixty-four percent home ownership in our city, and we'd like to maintain that threshold.
Uh, we don't have anything specifically in mind, but we'd certainly be open to suggestion and whatever you, whatever that you think would be appropriate, then that would be fine with me because I agree one hundred percent. It's, uh, um, it's just different winners and losers.
Thank you very much, I yield.
Yes, ma'am.
The chair recognizes Councilwoman Williams Brown.
Thank you, Mayor, um, and thank you for this presentation, um, and for, for this project. Councilwoman Pritchett actually asked the two questions that I wanted, that I wanted to ask, um, and so I will just offer this as a comment that, um, at our last meeting, we had a very informative presentation from the ARC around our housing stock, housing supply, housing needs. And one of the things that was pointed out, um, I think actually on slide number six, is that the respondents to the survey that, that they did cited the need for affordable and mixed-use housing, more housing options, including townhomes and condos, and a better mix of rental and owner housing. Um, and so, I don't, I don't have a packet in front of me, nor, normally, we get a packet, um, to read through, but, um, I do think that what is being proposed is fits with what we heard at the last meeting from the ARC about how we need to, um, diversify our housing stock. And so I do look forward to having this come back, um, at the next meeting. And also, if somebody can send me the packet that we usually get so I can read that before the next meeting, um, I would appreciate that as well. But thank you.
So this goes to the next meeting as well? So, I, I, I guess I'm not?
No, the, this is so, I think as the mayor would point out, the mayor's gonna explain it.
This is, this is just a hearing, we will not vote on this, we will vote on this at the April twenty-seventh meeting.
Okay.
Uh, and so you'll have to be coming back for that meeting, so just, uh, when you come back, before you come back for the vote, if you could just send whatever it is that they're asking for.
Yes, sir.
All those elevations.
Will, when we come to this other meeting, do we need to be prepared with anything or just answer questions?
Uh, you, there won't be questions, some people may have public comment, but there, there won't, there won't be another hearing, we'll just be voting.
Yes.
But what, I guess, I think what people are asking for is additional information before we vote, while we're contemplating the vote.
Yes, sir. Okay.
Yes, um, thank you, Mayor, because I know in the, um, in the ARC's presentation, again on slide six, um, it says that fifty percent of respondents earn under a hundred thousand dollars per household, um, thirty-two percent wanted to see homes that were priced under three hundred K. Um, and so I think having that information, um, so, you know, just so that we can do some of our, you know, our due diligence, 'cause you will hear me say, if you stick around long enough, things need to work together.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so, you know, just, we wanna make sure that as we are looking at housing for the city, that we are in keeping with what the ARC just gave us at the last meeting.
Okay, um, I don't wanna belabor this, we, we gotta get to an executive session at another meeting, but, uh, can I ask, um, ma- Madam City Manager, I would like to ask for just some more information from the CDRA Director, if he is prepared, to know why the staff and the Planning Commission recommended denial?
I can answer that, I think.
Oh, uh, the, I, whoa, all right, uh, who, I guess whomever can answer it, he's just...
So, I don't wanna break the protocol.
Let me, let me hear first, I'm gonna yield first to our Mayor Pro Tim. I'm, I'm assuming you were at the meeting.
Uh, I watched the meeting, and so, um, because the original, the original site plan that was submitted is, they had more houses on that site plan, the original site plan, and they reduced the number, um, and there were a few little this and that that they had to work out. And so, um, the site plan that they want us to consider, um, not positive if you have submitted that, uh, to CDRA at this time, uh, when I spoke to Mr. McClendon, I believe he said he had not received that site plan from you. And so that was, uh, my understanding, their reason, uh, because they have to evaluate it based on that, the criteria which the site plan may possibly meet. So that's my understanding.
Okay. You, you concur?
Uh, so, thank you, I, I didn't wanna speak if it was gonna violate your, your protocol, but, um, the site plan that unfortunately, due to technology, didn't show up on the screen, addresses, to my understanding, the two items that I believe was the cause for staff's denial, which related to the buffer and the landscape strip. From my reading of the report, everything else, as we said, there's no barion requests, everything complies with what goes with that zoning, except those two things, those two things are addressed in today's version of the site plan. Staff has not had a chance to see that, so obviously, they, it would be unfair to ask them to recommend, approve, or deny, or, or look at the drawing and confirm what I'm saying. And, uh, with, uh, Councilwoman, as, as she, as she's indicated, uh, respectfully, if, if we can get that to, to staff ASAP, certainly well before the meeting, uh, our hope would be, uh, we can put the Director in a position where he'll be willing to stand up here and say, recommend for approval, we hope, we assume those two things have been addressed, there, um, are on the site plan literally today. So my apologies to Director for that.
Okay, so, uh, I mean, that's, it's a little concerning to me, um, that, that plans have changed from the time that the staff has seen it, let alone the Planning Commission? And I, I don't know, I wish, just thinking out loud, I wish there was something that we could do in our process so that we are considering the same things that the Planning Commission and the staff is, and if there're gonna be changes made, then maybe they should go back to those bodies before they, before they come to us. Uh, the, what is the setback for these homes?
So the setback, um, will be at least twenty feet from the back of the curb or the back of the sidewalk to allow room for a car to be parked, so that would be the two spaces, one in the garage and one, obviously, in the driveway.
Okay. And then the, the width of the street?
Um, I'm trying to remember off the top of my head, it's fifty-foot right away, so it would be whatever your code requires.
Just whatever that minimum is.
Yeah.
All right, so, uh, because I was looking, um, so, so here's my concern, a lot of times when we do have these, a couple things. Uh, I actually think, I don't have as much of a problem with one-car garages, I do, I do think that we, um, need to be thinking about, uh, more transit-friendly, pedestrian-friendly, we've been talking about that and reducing the number of, of, of parking spaces, um, we've been talking about that as we, uh, in our comprehensive planning university. However, uh, this is at the end of a martyr line that I have written, uh, for many years, it's a thirty-minute bus ride to the train.
Yes, sir.
And then, you know, then you gotta ride the train to wherever you're going. And, and in a lot of these communities, um, in District Six and Seven where we have one-car garages, there are two or three cars, right? Uh, because, uh, three hundred thousand dollar house, you know, needs multiple incomes to, to support it, and then if you have a kid in high school, like, you're already up at, at three cars. And so there's about sixty-eight spaces for commercial retail. I, I didn't hear about any other community parking spaces for the clubhouse, I'm, I'm concerned that what will happen is that, that those spaces will just become parking for people that live in the townhomes, or that, uh, what we see in a lot of one-car garage communities is that so many people are parking on the streets that when our, our friends from Fire and EMS come through, they can't, you know, they can't get through. So those are just some of the concerns. I, I would personally, this is just, just throwing it out, like, I don't even get a vote, but I, I wouldn't be opposed to apartments or duplexes that were, um, joined together, uh, and just provided for some higher density, um, for not only supporting the, uh, commercial, but also just thinking about how we plan for, uh, fitting everybody in, into the space.
This is just the, the parking thing, um, the, at, at the playground, there will be some additional parking spaces, but, um, also, I'm very adamant about, uh, there being no street parking, the, the covenants will definitely have in the covenants that there's, there's, there's no street parking. Uh, because that's, to me, that, um, like you said, it's, it's a safety concern, but it, it's also a, uh, a, a visual concern, it just makes the neighborhood look less attractive, so that the, the covenants will, um, address the parking in the street.
And, and again, that, that, that will just be a challenge to a force because the, people will have guests, if it's my first home, I'm gonna be inviting people over for guests. But, uh, thank you so much, I think, uh, this was our last item. Mr. Clerk?
Yes.
All right, well, thank you. Uh, we have about seventeen minutes, sixteen minutes before our seven o'clock hearing. Um, I would like to ask, Madam City Manager, do you have just the number of executive session items? You have none? All right. Um, and our, and our attorney has none, I know that our council may have some.
Uh-uh, no, we don't, we don't.
Okay, awesome. All right, uh, well, I will entertain a motion.
I move to adjourn.
To adjourn. It's been properly moved and seconded? Uh, any discussion?
We are ready to stand.
All right, uh, let's take this vote by a show of hands.
Corr, that vote should approve unanimously, we adjourned at six forty-three PM.
We adjourned at 6:43 PM.
You are joining us live here in our still fairly new city council chambers at 5440 Fulton Industrial Boulevard, 30336. Mr. Clerk, please sound the roll.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of council. This is a roll call for the April 8th regular council meeting of the City of South Fulton City Council. The Honorable Catherine Nefaral, District 1.
Present.
The Honorable Carmelita Gomes, District 2.
Present.
The Honorable Helen Z. Willis, District 3.
Present.
The Honorable J.C. Sebastian, District 4.
Present.
The Honorable Keisha B. Bell, District 5.
Present.
The Honorable Natasha Williams Brown, District 6.
Present.
The Honorable Linda B. Pritchett, District 7.
Here.
And the Honorable Mayor Khalid.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a call.
All right, please sound the first item.
Next item is invocation by the city chaplain, chaplain chambers, I believe.
Lord, teach us to pray. It's been a long and colder springtime, kind of day, but with our hearts and our hands all busy and our private little wars, we stand and walk.
The same God that our grandmothers and our grandfathers and our forefathers prayed to, Lord, we pray to you today. Lord, we come to you at the close of another day, and we may not have had time enough earlier, but we say thank you. Lord, we thank you for yesterday's, and we thank you for today. We thank you that things are as good as they are. Even if not perfect, they're still good because of you. And Lord, as we assemble tonight, I'd ask a special prayer on all the people in this room tonight, Lord. Lord, be with them, stand with them. Lord, give them the desires of their hearts. And Lord, as I pray, let some something magnificent happen in this room tonight, Lord. Lord, as the Clark sisters said, "I'm looking for a miracle. I expect the impossible. I believe the invincible." Oh, Lord, we're looking for a miracle. Miracles still happen. And Lord, I know that if you did it for Abraham and Sarah, and you did it for so many others, what says that you can't do it for us too? Lord, be with us tonight, Lord. Let the words of our mouths and the meditations of our hearts be acceptable first in your sight. Oh, Lord, my strength, and yet my Redeemer liveth. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
That brings us to Romans, numero 4, proclamation presentations. We have two this evening. The first is proclamation presentation honoring Sheila Mance, sponsored by Councilmember Sebastian.
Well, good evening. Gives me great honor to present this proclamation to this fine young lady who often reminds me that in District 4, we do things fabulous. And she's responsible for not only doing things in the district where she lives, but also across our entire city and across the metro Atlanta area. So, I'm gonna start with the mayor, start down there, and we're gonna make our way up. So, Mr. Mayor, here you go.
We're at Sheila Mance, founder and owner of Added Pizzazz, an event design, hosting, and entertainment company. Is a proud native Atlantan with family roots in South Fulton County, has long been a visionary and leader in the Atlanta community. And whereas Sheila's passion for event design led her to open Added Pizzazz events, later the Mance Estate, a beautiful five-acre ranch with a private lake in the City of South Fulton, where she provides stunning event spaces for private gatherings and...
And whereas Sheila has earned a stellar reputation as an event producer extraordinaire, known throughout metro Atlanta for creating extraordinary experiences and working with celebrities, government entities, and major corporations and...
Whereas Sheila has become a leading figure in the event design industry, using her talent and creativity to elevate every event, and was recently awarded as the host team leader for the prestigious Le Dinner en Blanc, Atlanta. All right now, which is a gathering of friends and friends of friends for a night of good conversation, food, and wine in an iconic setting held in more than 120 cities in over 40 countries around the world, each with its own local flair, traditions, cuisines, and...
Whereas Sheila has created meaningful events such as Taste of Sofu, an event designed to foster connections amongst neighbors, business owners, and artists, and the Sofu Legends Ball, which celebrates extraordinary people within the community and honors those making a difference in South Fulton, and...
Whereas Sheila earned a bachelor's degree from the University of Maryland and associate's degree in business management from DeKalb Technical College, showcasing her commitment to education and self-improvement. And whereas Sheila is a passionate advocate for her community, serving on the Board of Directors for the City of South Fulton Convention and Visitors Bureau and the Greater South Fulton Chamber, where she chairs the Film and Entertainment Committee.
Whereas Sheila is also the founder of the It's All About Me Conference, which encourages women to prioritize self-care, and she also hosts free camps for underserved children in the community, empowering the next generation. And whereas Sheila's dedication to preserving the legacy of her legendary Uncle Robert Bob Mance, a civil rights advocate, led to the creation of the Bob Mance Project, a nonprofit organization that seeks to tell the stories of unsung heroes and promote mentorship, sustainability, and voters' rights, and...
Whereas Sheila continues to inspire and uplift those around her through her work, her vision, and her commitment to making lasting impact in both her community and beyond.
Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and the city council hereby recognize and commend Ms. Sheila Mance for her extraordinary contributions to the City of South Fulton and the metro Atlanta area, and for achievements, dedication, positive impact on the lives of people and society at large, and for her legacy of excellent service, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, April 8th, as Sheila Mance Appreciation Day in the City of South Fulton.
I don't like to talk a lot on the mic, but I did want to say about 15 years ago, I did most of my events in Buckhead and Norfolk, and I said that I wanted to bring something back to my roots, and I started looking for a place in South Fulton. And I love the City of South Fulton, and love is an action word.
One, two, three. One more time. One, two, three. Congratulations.
And I do want to say my mom is here, my biggest supporter, and my second biggest supporter, Michelle Taylor-Willis.
Come on, come on, take up a quick picture. Dr. Cooper, can you escort Mom up quickly? Come on, Michelle, come on. You're the one that's always in front of the camera. You shouldn't be shy. Come on, come on, come on. Right here, right here. Your business partner. Come on. All right. You shy? You shy? It's okay, it's okay.
Next proclamation is a proclamation presentation to Ms. Judy Knowles, sponsored by Councilmember Sebastian.
Ms. Judy, thank you very much for all you have done. Come forward, let's give you this well-deserved proclamation. This, to me, has been a long time coming. And by the way, we are doing all we can in this city to take care of the environment. I know that is something that you have long advocated for, and we are doing our best, even addressing littering. We had a presentation earlier today, right, that we will, we'll talk about. All right, Mr. Mayor, you want to kick us off?
Whereas Judy Knowles has been a proud resident of South Fulton for more than 50 years, demonstrating a steadfast dedication to the well-being, beautification, and quality of life of her community. And whereas since 1970, Judy has led the Keep the South Fulton Beautiful program, collaborating with numerous communities, organizations, and businesses to raise awareness of the value of a clean and healthy environment.
Whereas Keep South Fulton Beautiful, a local grassroots initiative and affiliate of the National Keep America Beautiful Program, the largest community improvement initiative in the United States, reflects the environmental aspirations of the people who live, work, and visit South Fulton County and...
Whereas Judy Knowles has worked tirelessly with a Board of Directors, volunteers, government agencies, elected officials at every level, law enforcement, business leaders, and community representatives to foster pride and a shared commitment to an improved South Fulton, and...
Whereas her personal motto, "A clean, attractive, safe, and healthy community is a good place to begin," has inspired decades of environmental stewardship and civic engagement, and...
Whereas through her leadership, Judy has emphasized the importance of persevering South Fulton natural beauty to encourage economic development, enhance public safety, protect public health, and instill community pride. And whereas...
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I do want to say that I'd like to recognize too Inga Kennedy and Rick Blackwell. Uh, they have been working with us constantly over the years, and uh, they, we have decided our board and volunteers to focus on education and public awareness. And so, you'll soon be getting some videos concerning this. We have a psychologist that works with us, and we're kinda quiet about what we do, but uh, we are a Keep America Beautiful and a Keep Georgia Beautiful program. And it's because of y'all, I see changes over the years. It's taken a long time, but uh, we are changing, and people care more now. And it is very important in economic development, in community pride, and public safety. Uh, we've all learned a lot in what we do, and I just wanna thank y'all very much, and this is very much appreciated.
All right, thank you, everyone. Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
Next item on tonight's agenda is room number five, is public comments. Mr. Mayor and Council, we did receive a number of public comment cards. Uh, we'll read the rules for public comment into the record. Um, any city of South Fulton resident or business owner who wishes to address the mayor and city council and offer public comment on any item on the agenda may do so during the public comment period of the meeting. Any county, state, and federal elected official should be allowed to speak regardless of city of residence. Comments should be limited to two minutes per speaker, a bell will signal the end of each speaker's time. Public comments shall be limited to only those items appearing on the current city council meeting agenda. The person or city council business owner desiring to speak should rise, address the city council, and when recognized, state their name, residential or business address, the agenda item that they are addressing, and the city council district in which they reside. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole and not to any member. To assure the opportunity for all those desiring to speak before the city council, there is no yielding of time to another speaker. Speakers may not employ obscenities or threats of violence in their comments. And speakers may not use public comments to campaign for political office, either for themselves or on behalf of other candidates, for the purposes of limiting political influence on city employees and encouraging orderly and efficient meetings. With those rules read into the record, as I call your name, please approach the center podium and state your name, address, district, the item on the agenda you're addressing, and your council district. Um, Michelle McCauley, Malika Ingram, Condra McGee, Kimberly King, Harry King, Richard Allen. If any of those speakers wish to provide public comment within the rules that were read, please approach the center podium.
Good evening. My name is Condra McGee, and I am speaking on case number Z24-027. Regarding this rezoning, the community has unreadiness still to offer our support for this case, and we are requesting that it is denied as is, or at least for a deferment. Unfortunately, a meeting did not take place for the community and the developer after I spoke to you guys last time on the 25th. Um, we received an update this afternoon that not everyone has been able to review, and there are still issues particularly related to the minimum lot size and the home square footage. Um, our community has always been extremely vocal about protecting the property values, our legacy, the aesthetic tranquility, the traffic ease, um, and the appeal of this neighborhood today and in the future. And so, we're gonna continue to lobby for certain conditions, but also based on our assessment and approval with the current proposed conditions and site plan, this would not be, uh, or it would be in conflict with the comprehensive plan. We are requesting a minimum heated square footage of 2,500, what we received today had 1,800. Our community is deemed a part of a suburban one neighborhood, which the staff's comments on the application confirms. As you guys know, suburban one allows for a density of up to three homes per acre. Um, the developer is proposing putting 42 homes on the 17 acres with a minimum lot size of 5,500. Um, the, in one acre, there's 43,000 square footage with feet that would amount to about 14,000, that's a stark difference from 5,500. Um, this puts us more into about eight lots per acre, which is more of a suburban two subdivision classification. Again, we are suburban one. Um, additionally, there's another cause that was not addressed, which the planning commission, um, the developer had already agreed to, and the planning commission had accepted, and that's with an interest for safety, um, to ease exiting and entering the neighborhood. Therefore, once again, we are recommending that the council denies this application as is, but if the developer is willing to make adjustments to the lot sizes, the home sizes, then we'd be willing to, uh, continue our discussions. We've had a lot of progress, so we'd like to continue to talk. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Malika Ingram, representing District Two. I'd just like to make a comment of support for, um, the First Read Ordinance Number Two, for the request for our Economic Development Advisory Board to be approved tonight. I have been a part of that group for the last year or so, and we want the support because we play a vital role in getting the, as a liaison between the community members and what the economic development team is doing. So, we play a vital role there, and just wanted to make sure you all understand that we have the potential to have great impact in that space, and we're volunteering our time in this capacity. So, just, uh, we'd like your all's support on that tonight. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Richard B. Allen, and I'm living District Three, and in the Old Fable Community. My residence is...
You can just pick that mic up, sir, and just hold it right, right to your mouth.
Okay, I would like to seek permission for my fellow neighbor to read my information. I can't stand very long anymore due to my condition, okay? So, if you'll give me permission to let him read what I have to say, I would appreciate it.
Absolutely, sir.
Is that possible?
Uh, Mayor, is, I see Mr. King, he's a District Three resident. Would you allow Mr. King read it, read it for you? He's a District Three resident, both of them are District Three residents.
Whoever, whoever you would like.
Thank you, Mr. King.
I'm Harry King, and I am in District Three, and, um, Mr. Allen, uh, has been so instrumental in the development of the city of South Fulton, that at this time, he stated that his, um, his medical condition has, has kinda said, okay, I need to pass the torch. However, he ain't there yet. So, uh, I'll read what he's saying, and I'll be brief. I am Richard Allen, residing at 3925 Wolf Creek Circle in the city of South Fulton. I live within two blocks or less from the entrance point that the proposed development at 3880 Thaxton Road. We have been negotiating with Mr. Mahoney and the Battle Law Group and the developer since the end of January of this year, to now back and forth. However, we have yet to reach an agreement on one or two key components, and mainly it's the lot size that we're talking about here. 5,000 square feet sizes and heated square feet of 1,600. Our community appreciates all of the efforts put forth, but we are continuing to need clarification about what was approved as a minimum, and that was, uh, 22,500 square feet initially, and the Battle Law Group later changed it to 1,800 square feet. So, it's been very frustrating. How did they acquire and clean up the new agreement number of 1,800 and back to 1,600? So, uh, in a nutshell, if, uh, our community remains concerned that even at this hearing come, the mutual agreement that we both can sit down and continue to discuss this matter, and if not, then we are asking that you, that, um, people that are in charge of making these decisions deny, or we are asking for an extension where we can sit down, and we have been working with them. So, there's no reason why we haven't been able to accomplish what we need and set out, and thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And I, I, I basically, everything has been said, my name was on the card, Harry King, so everything has pretty much been said, and, and, and this is my sister with the same last name.
My mighty sister. Kimberly King, I live in District Two. Good evening, distinguished council members. I'm also here to speak on behalf of zoning case Z24-027. As relates to the proposal, and I think that the notes outlined it nine months ago, the, uh, Planning Department presented this, and the community has worked in good faith for the last three months very closely with the council members that are impacted two and three. And I was actually pleased, and I heard that the developer and law firm agreed to a series of 21 conditions. Unfortunately, those conditions haven't been met. And when, you've heard about the lot size, and I know what it's like to go back and forth with developers and with the Planning Department, and for them to request an answer several weeks ago, and to get that answer this afternoon, Mr. Allen and several other members of our community near Old Fable, the legacy residents, they just can't hop on a Zoom. They're not in a group meeting. So, to really get the information out there about what has changed and what remains, you need some time to do that. Unfortunately, it's on your agenda today. So, I would echo the comments that you've already heard, and ask that this proposal be, um, delayed, and if you have to do it today, I would say deny, because the conditions haven't been met, and hope that they will continue to work in good faith to meet the 21 conditions, which is also speaks to the staff recommendation, staff recommendation was, um, conditional approval, and the Planning Commission, like you, made up of our neighbors, people that actually live in the city of South Fulton, approval with the 21 conditions. Those conditions haven't been met. So, I just asked, did you please consider that? We all live here, we want this to continue to be a city on the rise, and we do that by working closely with and collaboratively with partners, and then necessarily showing each other mutual respect. When you emailed me this afternoon, I don't have a chance to really respond in a, in a thoughtful way, and I think my neighbors, our neighbors, our fellow citizens deserve that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. King. Last speaker is Ms. McCauley. I don't know if you want to speak.
Yes, good evening. I was gonna speak on the item, if there were any questions for the zoning on my half, and I apologize, I was not here earlier, but I went out to wish Ms. Knowles a well-wishing, 'cause I've worked with her a long time at Fulton County, and that was a well-deserved reward, so I thought I'd go up and say that. So, thank y'all for honoring her.
All right, thank you. That was the final comment.
That completes public comment for this evening.
All right, uh, please sound the next item.
Next item is council comments.
All right, we will start this time with District One, Dr. Rowe.
Thank you for recognizing me. Just a couple of updates. Um, at the Southwest Art Center, we have an exhibit yesterday, today, for tomorrow, a solo exhibit by Arthur Moe Moore. It runs through May 3rd at the Southwest Art Center. Stop by if you have an opportunity on, on, and on April 19th, they have an artist talk from 1:00 to 3:00. Also, the Evelyn G. Lawry Library has a, uh, request, they're looking for volunteers. The hours are Wednesdays from 12:30 to 3:30, and Saturday from 12:00 to 4:00. You can reach out to, uh, Rich Wilkins or directly to somebody at the Southwest, I mean, at the Evelyn Lawry Library. Again, they're looking for volunteers. We also have the Jazz Appreciation Month recognition with Randy, Randy's Band, which is doing a jazz appreciation event, um, and they'll be featuring a Barry White vocal tribute in a funky party jazz. Um, if you haven't done this, we get great participation from the, um, senior city, uh, senior centers across Fulton County. That'll be on tomorrow, April 9th, from 12:00 to 2:30 PM at the Southwest Art Center. If you have not checked out my newsletter, I have a lot of scholarship opportunities for seniors to take advantage of, to help defer the cost of post-secondary education, and so, I think it's about six opportunities in my newsletter, please check those out. And we also have, uh, the District One Bingo Event on April 19th from 1:00 to 4:00 at the Sandtown Rec Center Gymnasium. Come out and enjoy an afternoon of fun and food and friendly competition. I know y'all get a little serious on that bingo. And, uh, last but not least, um, Sandtown Crossing is having a Meet the Business Block Party, if you will, on April 19th from 12:00 to 4:00. Uh, we have a lot of business, not just Publix in that plaza, so please stop by. We have, you know, boutique gardens, garden, and a number of small business, many of which are owned by our residents, so please come out and support them. Um, it's gonna be a great afternoon of fun, and that's from 12:00 to 4:00 on April 19th. And that concludes my comments.
All right, District Two, Councilwoman Gomes.
Hello, and good evening, everyone. We have a lot going on in District Two or across the city, but I will just share some of them. Uh, tomorrow, on Wednesday, April the 9th, certainly we ask you to come out at 10:00 AM to join the South Fulton region as we break ground on the Grady Free Standing Emergency Center. Also, too, tomorrow at 11:00 AM, there is the Arden's Garden ribbon cutting that will be off of Cascade, what's the address? At Cascade Crossing. This is our newest Arden's Garden that is in the city, so please come out and support. They'll giving out, uh, free samples, uh, healthy snacks. It is always a fun time, and I'm excited to welcome them to our city. Also, too, this coming Saturday, April the 12th, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM, we will be doing our Fourth Annual Gun Buyback at the South Fulton, um, Police Department at the Button Road Precinct. We ask that you bring out, um, any guns that you don't want anymore, if you found some guns in your house and you never seen it before, or broken guns, um, please bring them out to, um, our event on Saturday, and then we will have a post-event where we will go out and destroy these guns, um, to show that we are serious about crime and, um, preventing crime in our city. Also, too, on Thursday, April the 17th, starting at 10:00 AM, we will be having our grand ribbon cutting for our long-awaited Ena Road sidewalks. So, I do ask you all in that area to come out and support as we cut the ribbon, as we bring this project to a close, so we're super excited about that. And also, April 17th, I'm gonna have to take the day off. Um, April 17th at 5:30 to 8:00 PM at, um, Fresh to Earth, uh, tea shop that is in the Button Road Shopping Center, we will be hosting our Fourth Annual Women Business Mixer. We have a special guest, um, who will be speaking to women, uh, business entrepreneurs about baggage claim. Uh, that special guest is comedian and motivational speaker Kiana Dancey, so we're looking forward to that. Every year, we have a really good time celebrating women in their businesses. Also, too, for this year's Earth Day, we will be hosting, um, at Clifton Dell Park, with community cleanup, where we will be wearing our new, uh, pretty t-shirts that we just gotten from our Public Affairs Department. from our Public Affairs Department, but we will be hosting a cleanup and a paper shred at Clifton Dell Park at nine A.M. to two P.M., and it will be a busy day at Clifton Dell, but we're asking all residents to come out and help assist. And lastly, on April the twenty-ninth at six P.M., this is very important, and we need our residents engaged. We'll be hosting the future use of our Clifton Dell Park, our proposed State of the Art Community Center. We will be hosting this Community Shreds Information Day with our Carlos Perez, and he is hosting over our park's master plan. So that will be at Renaissance Church of Christ on April the twenty-ninth at six P.M., and we're looking forward to all the residents coming out for that. And lastly, you may have received some cards, but we have the Divine Nine, I believe this, is this their tenth year? Their tenth year, their tenth birthday for the Divine Nine Five-K Celebration, which is always good. So they have opened up registration. Please make sure you come out. This will be on June fourteenth, Saturday, at Wolf Creek Amphitheater, and you'll get medals and cute, I already have the nineteen oh eight sign, so you can't get that number. But please make sure you come out and join us. It is a really great time. And if you need to find out more information, you can always join my newsletters, or you can follow me on social media, as well as go to my website at Councilwoman Carmelita Gomes. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you. District Three, Councilwoman Willis.
Thank you. I want to thank everybody who came out to the inaugural Red Oak District Community Market. It's gonna be hosted every first Friday. Thank you to Trevor and the Red Oak Historic District Board and Cylon Church. We had a great turnout, and we had a really good market. So it was a market that highlighted local businesses, fresh fruit, fresh vegetables, and arts and crafts. So look to this event again next first Friday in May. Councilmember Gomes told you about the Grady Free Standing E.R. that is going to be having the groundbreaking tomorrow, and this is gonna be big for the region. It will also help reduce response times from our ambulance services. Grady is also having a Community Health Day on April nineteenth at their location in the Camp Creek Marketplace. So check out my newsletter. All of these flyers are in my newsletter. We are hosting our annual Stop the Violence Rally in partnership with the Links for Change and all of the public safety sectors on Sunday, April twenty-seventh, from one to six. This is to bring awareness to gun violence, and we have several people that give testimonials to the everlasting impact on families who have lost loved ones to gun violence. So this is something that we do every year, and we ask that you come out. It's just a big picnic day on Sunday at the church. There is a public information participation meeting being hosted at Cylon Church International on April fourteenth at six P.M. for the expansion of Wellspring Living. We ask that you come out and participate in these meetings. We had the one for Fifth Third Bank on yesterday, and we didn't have a lot of participation for that meeting, and I guess because everybody loved the project that's coming to the city of South Fulton in District Three. So we look forward to that project advancing. Our Economic Development Town Hall will be at Welcome All Park on, and at the Economic Development Town Hall, we will be reviewing the rendering for the new Economic Main Street Office that is going to be on Camera Road, so please make sure you come. We also will have Francesca Warren, who will be participating, to talk about how our development and economic development, the impact on the education. She gave a very, there was a very interesting presentation done at Westlake a couple of weeks ago, and we're gonna bring it closer to home at Welcome All Park. That is gonna be on April seventeenth at six P.M. at Welcome All Park, so make sure that you are there to get the information. And lastly, that is it. If you're not getting my newsletter, I implore you to subscribe or send me an email so I can add you to the distribution list. I share universal information, so information that is good for everyone across the city. What happens in District Three happens in the city. So I will suggest that everybody subscribe to everyone newsletter up here so that you all can get all the information. I will be participating in it, and I'll let her talk about it, Councilmember Bell's Easter Extravaganza, because I am trying to condense what I do and partner with my colleagues so we won't have an Easter egg hunt over here, Easter egg over here, Easter egg hunt over there. She's doing a big Easter egg hunt, and I will be joining her in doing an arts and craft table with kids to make their Easter baskets, and we will also have some made. So I'll see you at her Easter Extravaganza that she will tell you about. Thank you so much and have a great evening.
District Four, Councilwoman Sebastian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want to thank folks who came out, some of my colleagues here, to celebrate the Creekside Vast League Girls for a undefeated state championship this earlier, sorry, last week. Also, thanks to staff and Director Antonio and Mr. Burkett and all the team that helped with the recycle on, on Saturday, Recycle and Shred Day on Saturday. Also, to our Fire Department and Chief Chad Jones, and by the way, congratulations, guys, on your, your recent awards, but they helped to put on what today has been the largest fire and ice, fire safety program in District Four. We had nearly two hundred parents and kids come through to learn about fire safety, and if you haven't seen our, our trailer that demonstrate what to do in case there's a fire in your kitchen and so on, you need to find that thing and look at it. It is very realistic, but they use it as a tool to help teach folks about fire safety. Coming up in District Four, on the nineteenth of April, we have the Fourth Annual Autism Sensory Festival at Wilkes-Barre Park, starting at eleven in the morning and running until about six. On April twenty-fourth, we'll be launching this year's District Four Farmers Market at the Plaza Shop at Cedar Grove, six thousand Lynn Markway. And on the thirtieth, it's our second senior, senior experience safety event where we'll continue to teach seniors about how to be safe, how to protect themselves and, and their properties. Special guest speaker for that day would be Major Tamika Pritchett from our own police department, and Dr. Monwood Johnson, who is the CEO of Johnson's Health and Wellness Gaddy Do. And they'll be teaching us again about how to protect ourselves and how to be safe out there on, on these streets that can sometimes be unsafe. Just a quick reminder that, and thank you to the citizens who came out to last week's comprehensive plan meeting that was held at Elegant Occasions on April third. I know the next one is coming up on April tenth at Burdette Park, and we continue to stress that these events are for the entire city, not just the areas that they live in. With that, thank you. You.
All right. District Five, Councilwoman Bell.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for tuning in or being here with us this evening. I want to thank everyone that came out for the shredding and recycling event. Shout out to Bit Coop, we, we know him as Bit Coop, but our Assistant City Manager, Dr. Cooper, for coming out and being present on scene on Saturday, as well as our solid waste team and department. So thank you to Mr. Burkett and everyone that helped to make that event a success. I was a little worried at the beginning, but nevertheless, it was a great turnout for residents to come and be able to bring all their bulk, as well as shred and recycle. So thank you. We are, as mentioned, getting ready for the Comprehensive Development Plan, Phase Two of the Community Engagement, which is scheduled for Thursday, April the tenth, at Burdette Park, and the time that it will begin is at six-thirty P.M. So we do encourage residents to come out, whether you're in District Five, Six, Seven, one through seven. We encourage all of our residents in the city of South Fulton to come out. This is your time to let your voices, your concerns be heard because we are planning for our future, and so this is the time. Chime in, bring your suggestions and your concerns, and participate in our Comprehensive Development Plan. We are gearing up for summer and spring, and so we are going to be getting our Fit for Duty Health and Wellness classes that start on Thursday, April the tenth, from six-thirty to seven-thirty at Burdette Park. So if you're there for the Community Engagement phase, you can also hopefully stay and get a quick workout with our Parks and Recreation Department. I know our Parks Rangers are also gonna be assisting with that, but we are continuing our Health and Wellness Initiative in District Five and throughout the city of South Fulton. So please join us for Fit for Duty, each and every Thursday evening from six-thirty to seven-thirty. It's free, and it will be housed at Burdette Park. We are underway with our Workforce Academy. Our electrical classes are up and going, so we are super excited for the thirty-two students who have signed up to participate in our Electrical Workforce Award-winning, two-time award-winning Workforce Academy that is in District Five at Burdette Park. So kudos to our Parks and Recreation Team. It's electric, and for all the students who have signed up to receive free trade vocational training as well. And we do have some new programs that are coming soon. You will hear about it more in the meeting this evening, but we are increasing and expanding our Workforce Academy so that we can make sure that we're meeting the needs as far as workforce in our own city. And then last but not least, we're gearing up for the Easter Egg Extravaganza. This is the Second Annual Easter Egg Extravaganza and Community Resource. So it's a Easter egg with a twist. We want to make sure that not only do our residents receive community resources that are relevant for you and your families, but we're also hosting the Second Annual Easter Egg Extravaganza for our young children, our pre-teens, our adults, and then this year we have added something special for our season elite, where we will be having our first senior citizen Easter egg hunt. So please visit Eventbrite online. We've got a lot of great food vendors with food trucks. We've got over thirty community resources, anywhere from WellCare to Peach State, you name it. We have those opportunities for each of you, so let's get out of the I don't know syndrome because we have a lot of great resources that are available. So April the nineteenth from twelve to four, Burdette Park Field. Want to thank my two colleagues, Dr. Rowe, for all of the donations on Easter supplies, as well as Councilwoman Willis, who will be managing our Kids' Corner with Arts and Crafts. Again, if you are not receiving my newsletter, we send out a monthly newsletter and weekly correspondence. Please send us your information to kiosha.bell@cityofsouthfulton.gav. We want you to be engaged and connected, and that's one great way to be connected. Thank you so much, and y'all have a wonderful night.
District Six, Councilwoman Williams Brown.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So let's start with Earth Week. District Six will be having several activities for, in recognition of Earth Day. We will be celebrating the whole week, April twenty-first, with a walk into spring, starting at the L.A. Fitness and ending at IHOP. April twenty-second, we invite you to bring your tools and flowers to help us volunteer at Love T-Nolan Elementary, where we will be redoing the garden at the school. On the twenty-fourth, we will be doing yard trimmings, disposal. Please don't set your yard trimmings on fire. Please bring them to the L.A. Fitness Lot and dispose of them properly. Of course, April twenty-sixth is going to be the regular monthly food giveaway that is happening each month at Creole Park. In addition to the planting of the flowers and redoing the garden at Love T-Nolan, they also have a number of events. They are having an input meeting and a Bingo Night, community event on April seventeenth, as well as a school-wide PBIS celebration on the twenty-fifth. And from April thirtieth through May second, they will be doing the GMAS testing for grades three through five, as well as assessments for kindergarten through the second grade. They are always in need of snacks and water for the kids. You know, testing is a very long day, and so if you would like to help with donations of water and donation of, donations of healthy snacks for the kids to get them through testing, please get in contact with my legislative specialists in the back. Merlin, wave your hand. Merlin dot night at cityofsouthfulton.gav. In addition to all of that, yes, there's more. We are going to be having, the American Heart Association is gonna be having a CPR class at Burdette Gym on April the... Well, I have the date. I will send it out in my newsletter, but you do need to register now for the CPR class. The Old National District will be having their Local First Small Business Forum. We are, in addition to Earth Day activities, we are encouraging everyone to buy local first, and that is going to happen at the Economic Development Office on April the twenty-fourth. And of course, starting on Saturday, our Old National Girls Farmers Market will be back. It's the second Saturday of each month from April through October, beginning at twelve. And last, but certainly not least, I want to thank everyone for their continued work and support of District Six. Special thank you to the one hundred black men of South Metro, along with State Representative Deborah Bazemore. We had a really good event for men's wellness and health as we prepare for our September twentieth event, where we will be spending the day bringing resources and having activities centered around men's health. And certainly want to thank people for, who showed up for shred and recycling last Saturday. Those are your announcements. Please govern yourselves accordingly.
That's your time.
Accordingly.
Mayor Pro Tim Pritchett.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone, for coming out tonight and tuning in. I have an event coming up on April seventeenth. It is Fireside Community Chat with Chief Meadows. This gives an opportunity to people in the community to be able to meet and greet your fellow police officers and our, our police chief at our newest hotel, the Home Two Suites at seven-seven-seven-six El Lane, and will be outside at their fire pit, just having, you know, a good time, neighbors, getting to know each other, and, and having an opportunity really to engage with our law enforcement officers who are ready to listen to your concerns and give you good advice and just to get to know you better. So please come out on April seventeenth at six P.M. I will be there, too, so I look forward to seeing you then. And with that, I yield.
All right. Mr. Dawson, don't worry about the slides. I just want to ask everyone to keep the mayor of Palmetto, Ms. Teresa Thomas-Smith and her family in prayers. Her father-in-law, Deacon Jimmy Smith Senior, did pass his home-going services this weekend. So, Mayor, you are in our prayers. Ladies and gentlemen, those are your announcements. Please govern yourselves accordingly, and Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
This brings us to Roman number number eight, approval of the city council meeting minutes, regular meeting minutes from March twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five, the work session minutes March twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five, as well as the alcohol and zoning public hearing minutes, March twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five.
Oh, the chair will entertain a motion.
I move to approve the minutes that sounded.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, let's take this vote. Is everyone in the new queue? Let's take this vote by a show of hands. I forgot to mention- I forgot to mention, I have everyone make sure you switch over to the 7 o'clock queue. My colleagues up here on the dais.
Court, that motion approved unanimously, 7-0.
All right. Please sound the next item.
That brings us to adoption of the council agenda. Uh, I did want to note for the record that we did receive, um, the following amendments or additions to the agenda for District 7. Uh, April 17, 6:00 PM, Fireside Chat with Chief at Home Two Suites. April 21st at 6:00 PM, Fulton County Environmental Town Hall at the Economic Development Office. April 28th at 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the Fulton County Environmental Town Hall at Gladys S. Denard Library. Those are for addition to the agenda. And then, oh, you want to make an appointment? Uh, council appointment for District 1, Mr. Jane Shelby to the Citizen Action Committee.
All right, the Chair will entertain a motion. To approve the agenda as amended?
I motion to approve the agenda as amended.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Let's take this vote in the queue.
Court, that motion approved unanimously, 7-0.
All right, Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
That brings us to alcohol license rezoning, variance and modification cases for motion and vote. First item, letter A, second read and request council approval of an ordinance, TA 25-001, an amendment to the South Fulton Code of Zoning Ordinance, Section 803 dot 10, Public Participation Plan and Report Requirements to amend, Section B, general requirements, and Section C, the minimum requirements. Staff recommends approval conditional. Planning Commission recommends approval with conditions separate from staff.
The Chair will entertain a motion.
Well, I would, I would move to approve this, but I do have some amendments that, um, I would like to discuss, that I would like to make in discussion.
All right. Is, there is a motion for approval? Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. We'll start discussion with Mayor Pro Tim Pritchett.
Thank you. Um, and, let's see. In section, in section 1, uh, B4, uh, it says, uh, for the Public Participation Plan that you're supposed to include the date, time, location of any public participation meeting, and it needs to be filed simultaneously with the rezoning or special use or zoning modification application. I think that that is a little, I think that's just a bit much at one time because it's almost like you have to schedule your public participation meeting at the same time that you submit an application. If there's an issue with your application, then you have to keep going back and forth. I think you should be able to submit your application first, and as your application is reviewed, then, um, and I, I believe that they have, like, a pre-application meetings. As your application is reviewed and you start moving forward, when you get to the point of the public participation meeting, then you schedule it. But I don't think that, I, me, I just think that that's just too much. Um, that's one point. Uh, the next point is that, um, let's see. Um, I would like to see, we made these recommendations, uh, at our last meeting, that there should be somewhere on our city website that would have the meeting schedules, the dates, locations, the case numbers, that thing, somewhere that any citizen and even us can go on a particular page on our city website to find the schedule of meetings. So I didn't see that included anywhere in this, uh, amendment. Uh, then, in number 7, letter C, uh, let's see. It talk, uh, letter C and then number 2. It says an explanation of how interested parties will be informed of rezoning, special use or zoning modification applications. And then number 3 says method for providing opportunities for discussion with interested parties before public meetings, public hearings are held. I think that that language is kind of redundant because of the fact that this whole amen, the, the whole public participation plan is to engage and inform interested parties about rezoning, special use and modifications. I, I think asking them to recite what we have outlined that they have to adhere to is just, to me, redundant. But that's just my opinion. Um, then number, let's see, uh, number 4. Uh, it says a notification required meeting must be sent via first-class mail, a minimum of 30 days. I, I do have an issue with restricting it only to first-class mail because if I meant, as I have mentioned before, there are other methods, um, of mailing. Uh, there is Every Door Direct through the US Postal Service. It is a lot more reliable. Um, it still will meet the requirements of the one-mile radius. So I just wouldn't like to see this not be limited to first-class mail, but to be to, be flexible, allowing, uh, the fir-, allowing mailing mechanisms or, uh, mailing options that are reasonable. And you're still using the postal service, but the two different mailing methods have two different types of results. And then lastly, uh, let's see, number 5, D, well, no, I'm sorry. Then DA, uh, it says that the applicant should provide the, this, the following information in their participation plan report. A, a list of parties that were contacted, the methods of the notification that were used, and copies of all notification letters. I think that that is extremely burdensome. Um, if you mailed to a thousand people, you have to provide about two reams of paper to satisfy this request, which I think just does not, it, it, it's just, it's, it's just too much. It's too cumbersome. So, um, because you're required to have to contact the people in a mile radius, and it's a requirement, then you should just confirm that you met the requirements instead of having to provide all of this information that is really a lot. And I don't even, well, I asked, um, our city attorney, and I asked Director McLendon if this was a requirement. They said it wasn't. And so if it's not a requirement based on Georgia law, I think that just making all these, all these requirements in this letter that I mentioned is just too cumbersome. So I'd like to amend it. If anybody was following, if that made sense, because y'all are looking at me crazy. Um, and we can continue to discuss it, but, uh, those were my concerns. Uh, and if this discussion does not really need to continue on tonight in this fashion so that it gives the rest of the council the opportunity to review it again and come up with the right version, I am amenable or I would recommend holding it off until the next council meeting for us to fine-tune it a little bit more. And with that, I will yield for now.
All right. Uh, before I go to the next speaker in the queue, uh, have you emailed those amendments to council? If, if, if you could, if you have a summary or bullet points that we could, like, as we discuss them now, we could review them. That'd be great.
I will.
All right. Uh, the Chair recognizes District 1, I believe, Councilwoman Rile.
Yes, thank you. I tried to follow your comments, but they seem all pretty much tied to me, to the same concept. I thought this amendment was seeking to make sure that, uh, impacted parties had at least 30 days notice. And so if, if the 30 days you almost have to provide, you, you should let them know the location of where it's gonna be so that they can go ahead and start advertising. So, um, from that standpoint, I think your changes, they kind of, they kind of go against the effort to try to give as much notice to people who are impacted so they can show up at the meeting. That's just my general thought. And then I think on that last one, um, a list of who you sent it to is just confirming, because sometime we do hear that, oh, I didn't get the list. I think it's helpful to know who they sent to in case there is some discrepancy. Um, and they shouldn't have to do a ream of paper. That's the list. So that, that's just my general feedback.
It says copies of all notification letters.
But it might be one letter. It might just be, hey, the meeting is at... Oh, that's what you're speaking to.
Wait, let's get some, I see some, I see some headwagging from our city attorney. Let's get some clarification.
Someone has to, it's not, um, every single letter that they sent out. It's typically the same notification letter sent out to each and every person. So it's not, if it, they're sending out to a thousand people, it's not a copy of a thousand letters. It's a copy of the notification letter that they sent to a thousand people, if that makes sense. It says...
It says all, and it should say the instead of all.
Understood, but it's not a thousand letters. It's just the copy of the notification letter that was sent.
Understanding that, does that change any of the amendments that you'd like to make, Mayor Pro Tim?
No.
Okay. Um, are you, do you yield?
I absolutely do, but after I say, I just think clarifying.
Wait, on the mic, please.
I said clarifying, clarifying D3A, um, and to say a copy of the notification letter, um, I think gets there, but she, she may not, she doesn't seem to agree, but I think it will.
All right. District 3, Councilwoman Willis.
So I, I think that we, that the easier way to deal with this is probably just to vote on each recommendation that she's changing. I don't agree with all of them. Um, I do think that, um, I don't think that you can track or they give you some type of, uh, tracking notice with, uh, uh, with the door-to-door mail. I think with first-class mail, you can get some type of tracking, a notification that it was mailed and when it was mailed out. So, um, I think that we should get, allow flexibility as long as they can give us proof that, that it was done. Um, whether it's first-class or whether it's door-to-door, but we need to have proof that it was done. I, we did ask that the, no, what's that? Oh, we did, I did ask that the, um, the notices be placed online and mailed to all council members, emailed to all council members, not mailed. Emailed to all council members. And I did ask for the notices to be placed on social media. We did ask that it be, we, it be a comprehensive approach with the notices. And I don't see that reflected in this order. It's, and it needs to be. Um, I didn't see that where, unless I missed it. But we asked for it to be placed online, sent to the council members, all council members. And we also asked for it to be put on social media, on the social media, city social, social media outlets. And the reason we said sent to all council members because some of the districts, although the development may not be in that person-specific district, it may impact another council member's district or several council members' districts. So to make sure everybody is on the same page and get the same information, we said if the notices should be sent to all council members. Section 1. Applicants are required to send a copy of their letter of intent. That one? All required site plan and the time, date and location of the required pub participation, participation meeting to all, participating to all members of the South Fulton Council via email. The notice is required to be sent, but that's, that's, we said social media and we said placed online. The city's outlet, social media outlet and plus placed online. Can it be amended to that? I move that we add that language to place the public participation meetings online and social media out, city's social media outlets. I moved, I made a motion. Oh, I can still make a motion, and I didn't get a motion.
Yeah, if I, if I, if I could chair for a minute, I'm not sure whether or not you made a motion, but it didn't get a second. And then you are, uh, Councilwoman, you did second it? Okay. Okay, so we're in a discussion on this omnibus motion. So I guess you would need to make a, what is it? A substitute motion to amend her motion to, for that one item?
So I would like to reclaim my clock, my time, Clerk Adams, because several people talked during my time when I had the floor. There was a motion to approve this. There was a second by Councilmember Williams Brown. We went into discussion, and then Councilmember, I mean, Mayor Pro Tim Pritchett, she verbalized all of the concerns she had. She did not make a motion for any of us to approve all of the, um, items that she outlined. As a matter of fact, she even mentioned that we may not have been able to follow her. Maybe this is not the right venue. I'm only asking to, I only made a motion to approve this one caveat, and that is to add the public participation notices online, city website, and also on the city's social media outlets. That's all I made a motion to do. I didn't make a motion to do anything else that you verbalized. And so that's, that's, that's what I'm clarifying. Because there was never a motion made for anything, for all the items. I'm just saying, I, I just, I just moved for that one thing. That's it.
Okay. So there is a motion and a second on the floor to approve this item. Amended or non-amended? There is, is that correct, Madam Attorney? Okay. What is, how do you opine that, that, did that motion include any of the amendments? Or was it just a, a, a clean motion to approve?
I... Substitution motion.
I, I, I think I want to hear from our attorney.
And I think I have the floor. So I should be asking...
I'm gonna ask the attorney.
So you taking the floor for me?
As a, I'm asking the, yeah, I am taking the floor for you. I'm asking the attorney to opine...
Point of order.
The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Williams, Willis for her point of order.
I would like the Chair to ask the city attorney, can the, can he just take the floor from me without me yielding?
If he's asking a parliamentary question, he can. Um, and I believe that that's what he's asking, is parliamentary procedure in this aspect. I do have a parliamentary answer, and then I also have a logistical answer. Um, parliamentary, and there was a motion and a second, and then it went into discussion, and she made a motion. The thing, where it gets a little sticky is, the motion was, I want to approve this item. However, I have changes. And that is what was seconded, is approving the motion with the changes before she listed the changes. Logistically, I think what needs to occur is we need to table this, put it back in the portal. You all make the comments, and I think that's the most economical use of our time.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. Um, how, is there a way, let me, let me ask the maker of the original motion if she would withdraw her motion? The maker of the original motion.
When does the floor come back to me, Chair? I still have 2 minutes and 19 minutes. I have 2 minutes.
When, when I'm done?
No, that's the point of order. Would you please ask the attorney, when should the, uh, when should the floor come back to me? Because I have the floor. And you had a parliamentary question, she answered. So could you please ask the city attorney, when should I get my 2 minutes and 19 seconds? Thank you. Thank you.
Madam Attorney.
After I answer the question, it should technically go back to her, and then once she's exhausted her time, you can inquire of the original motion or if she would like to withdraw her motion.
You got it, Councilwoman Willis.
Appreciate it. I would like to withdraw my motion, my, um, that I made, and I do agree, we probably, this is not ready. We have several changes. Um, so is it appropriate for me to make a motion to ta, to make a motion to table this until the next council meeting? Or should, how should I do this?
Actually, you should not do it because you made a motion after a motion was already made. Is that correct, Madam Attorney? So we would need to have the original maker of the motion withdraw her motion that we are in discussion for?
So to answer the parliamentary question, you withdrew your motion, so it should go back to the original motion or to inquire if she would also like to withdraw her motion, and at that time, we can entertain a motion to table this item.
Okay, so as I was saying about five minutes ago, uh, you withdrawn your motion, correct?
But I have not yet.
You, you, she, okay, so back to you, go ahead.
Could you release the mic, please?
Thank you very much. Um, withdraw the motion, um, I withdrew my motion, and I would like to, um, make a recommendation to the city attorney, um, to add that caveat in there for social media, public notices be placed on the city's social media outlets, and also that the, um, public notices be placed on the, um, city website. I do agree that we should, um, keep the location, time, and date at the time, uh, the application is filed, uh, or compromise could be that they give the time, date, and location for a public participation meeting when the application, um, meeting is done. That, would that allow enough time, because we're supposed to allow thirty days? Would that cut, if we, if we did it when the application meeting occurs? That's a question, is that a question for you? Clerk, can you, I'm waiting on the, um, who's supposed to answer that question?
I already got a question.
Would that allow enough time, um, city manager, would you allow him to answer that question? Would that allow enough time when the application meeting happens? Um, because we are supposed to allow thirty days, so the, the way that it is put in the ordinance now, it allows for thirty days, but, um, Councilmember Pritchett is saying that, for, if I understand correctly, that that's too much when somebody has to submit an application, and so I'm asking, would it, to compromise, once they submit an application, you have an application pre-planning meeting? Instead of them, can they submit the location, date, and time, and location at the application pre-planning meeting?
So the, the, um, we have a pre-applica, a pre-application meeting.
Right.
Which comes before the application is filed.
Right.
So the pre-applic, so the application, when we, when we're asking them to submit the time of their public participation meeting with the application, they've already held the pre-application meeting. So I think your, I, I think your suggestion has it backwards, if I'm hearing it correctly.
So when they submit their application, what happens next? They have the pre-application meeting, and then the, the application is submitted, is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
Okay, okay, well then, I, I do agree with my colleagues that we should leave it as is, because we're trying to allow, the, the, the issue that developers are saying is that they're not, they don't have enough time, it's putting them in a crunch to get the notices out, and the issue that we're having, we're hearing from residents is that they're not getting the notices timely, so I, I think we are at an impasse, and I now yield. Thank you.
One second.
Oh, okay, um, do you withdraw your motion?
I withdraw my motion, and I, I withdraw my motion and table it, and table this.
You'd like to make a motion to table?
I, 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 yes, what you say.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Let's take this vote by show of hands. All right, Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
Six zero.
The twenty second, the, the date, oh, I'm not.
When it's.
When it's ready.
When it's ready, thank you. All right, Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
Brings us to item, letter B, second read and request council approval of a zoning ordinance, K Z twenty four dash zero two eight, an application by Century Communities, care of Gaskins plus La Croix, requesting a rezoning from CUP in the Cliftondale Overlay District to CUP to develop one hundred and seven single-family detached homes in a residential community on fifty-three point nine acres of land at thirty-one forty-three and thirty-thirty De Mooney Road, zero Camp Creek Parkway, and zero Hathaway Road. It's located in Council District Two. Public hearing for this item was held on March nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. Staff recommends approval conditional. Planning Commission recommends denial.
The chair will entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve this application. Um, also too, there's a list of conditions that have been provided that the community worked tirelessly to achieve, and they have been provided, so I am motioning to approve this item with conditions.
It's been properly moved and seconded, and if.
I'm sorry, there's a, a list of them that will be provided to the clerk so it can be on record. Do you want me to read them all, because we got, we got a lot of time? City Attorney, do you want us to read those, um, items into the record, or would you like that to be submitted?
Is it?
It's in the document.
The agenda item says approval conditional, is it attached to that agenda item, or is are those conditions separate than what the agenda says?
Those additions are attached to the application and everything, yes.
Okay, then if it's attached and it's already there, you don't need to sound them, it just needs to be, uh, the motion to approve that as attached.
I just want to make sure. All right, thank you.
Second.
It's already been seconded, any further discussion? Let's take this vote by show of hands.
Court, that motion approved unanimously, seven zero.
All right, Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
Brings us to letter C, second read and request council approval of a zoning ordinance, K Z twenty four dash zero two seven, an application by Saleheen Real Property LLC, care of Battle Law, requesting a rezoning from AG one in the Cliftondale Overlay District and sub C to CUP to develop forty-nine single-family detached homes on seventeen point four zero acres of land at thirty-eight eighty Thaxton Road, and count, this is located in Council District Two. Public hearing for this item was held on February eleventh, twenty twenty-five. Staff recommends approval conditional. Planning Commission recommends approval with twenty-one conditions.
The chair will entertain a motion.
I will make a motion to hold this item until the next council meeting, which is, I believe, April the twenty-second. This will be the last deferral, and I will ask that the community, um, several conditions have been provided, and I've also, um, table marked and read both what was presented and what, uh, has been met, and the developer and the community have worked hard to achieve, and I think it's just a few other, um, well, one condition that needs to be addressed. Everything that the community has asked for is in this, um, in this condition packet, but I assume that they did not have time to read it, so I will give grace and, um, postpone this, um, process until the twenty-second of April.
It's been properly moved and seconded, any further discussion?
Yes.
The chair recognizes Councilwoman Willis.
Um, I would like to ask District Three residents, um, Mr. Allen, I understand, um, your situation, but Mr. Allen has been, um, relentlessly attending the meetings. I attended, I think, two of the meetings, and he was the only one from District Three at those meetings. Um, and there may have been others, but I haven't been invited to them. And so what I would ask, um, this district, while it sits in District Two, it does, it is directly across the street from, um, impacted residents in my district, and I would ask that, um, we need others in District Three to attend the meetings and, um, step up. This will be the last time, it will be deferred. I would also like to note that out of the twenty-one conditions, um, there's only one condition in question, and, uh, what can't be agreed upon is not a reason that we technically can't deny, because what is being asked is in code, and so I would implore, I would implore what, so what's being asked is in code, so it's not technically a reason we can deny, and so I would implore both districts to work hard, get together, show up, and work with the developer to get everything resolved before the next council meeting. I appreciate, um, the advocacy, and this is what community is all about, and I appreciate you all working with the developer, and we're almost there, so, um, but I want to put on a record, what's being asked, um, is not a reason we can deny, so please work with the developer and get this resolved.
No further discussion, let's vote by show of hands.
Court, that motion approved unanimously, seven zero, to defer to the April twenty-second meeting.
All right, uh, please sound the next item.
Next item is consent agenda, items A, B, C, and D.
The chair will entertain a motion.
I vote, I vote, I vote to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by someone, uh, any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, let's take this vote by show of hands.
Court, that motion approved unanimously, seven zero.
All right, please sound the next item.
Brings us to agenda items under procurement and contracts, letter A. Number one, the General Services Department is seeking council approval to purchase twenty-four Ford Explorer Police Interceptors from Wade Ford Incorporated under contract number nine 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 dash S F D E S forty, one nine nine three, seven three dash zero zero five. Funding for the Wade Ford former leasing option will come from the General Fund Principal Capital Lease Line, one hundred thirty-two oh one, five eight, twelve hundred. The available balance in that line is one million, four hundred and twenty-one thousand, four hundred and seventy-seven dollars and sixteen cents. There will be a slight need for a budget amendment to cover the three hundred thousand shortage, as the payment method has shifted from leasing to a direct purchase option. Funds in the Traffic Camera Fund are for leasing Enterprise Explorer Police Interceptors through the General Services Department that are coming online.
I move to approve the item as sounded. In addition, the General Services Department, uh, for a professional service agreement with C H A Consulting dated June twentieth, twenty twenty-three, the amendment proposed an additional sixty-four thousand, three hundred, bringing the total not to exceed the amount of a hundred and eighty thousand, extending the contract to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. This is specifically for environmental site assessment and environmental oversight for the Bishop Road landfill and providing environmental consulting services for the brownfield program application for the Wolf Creek Amphitheater. This amended scope of services for Georgia E P D brownfield services, updated phase one E S A for the Wolf Creek Amphitheater, and C H L, C H A's final inspection and close our documents for the Bishop Road landfill project. In addition, the police department's, uh, request to enter a one-year professional service contract with Lexicon Strategies effective April first, twenty twenty-five through March thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. It includes the option for two one-year renewals under the contract. Lexicon Strategies will provide critical communication services, including crisis manage, crisis communications, messaging, and media relations that amount for the one-year term shall not exceed a hundred and fifty thousand.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Before we go to discussion, I do want to check with our city attorney, is it proper to move and second multiple items in a single motion?
That would require a deeper dive. I understand it's been our practice to do that. I don't mind looking into it and opining at a separate time, but for the sake of time right now, I think we should go ahead and move forward.
Awesome, uh, I don't know who was first. Can we bring the queue up, Mr. Clerk? The chair recognizes Mayor Protim Pritchett.
Thank you for recognizing me, Mr. Mayor. Um, my, uh, question is for a clarification on item number three, um, for Lexicon Strategies. It says, "Social Media Management and Strategic Communication Support with City Officials." I spoke to the city manager about this to get clarification on who is city officials. Um, city manager, would you clarify that for me, please?
Sure, perhaps I should have said city staff in order to be more clear. Um, we wanted to make sure that, obviously, this is in support of the police department. Um, however, you know, we get hit with some kind of catastrophic event, you know, major hurricane or storm, and we need all hands on deck. I didn't want the contract not to allow us to have that type of an opportunity, and of, obviously, for fire as well, so, s- city staff.
Does that help? Okay. So I just wanted to make sure that that clarification is made so it's clear, okay?
All right, the chair recognizes Councilwoman Williams Brown. Or was that your question as well?
That, that was, that was my question as well.
All right, is there any further discussion? The chair recognizes Councilwoman Willis.
So I, I agree with the language, because I don't want a pigeonhole to just police in the case if you, city manager, feel like you need it beyond the scope of police, and even with public safety, say it hap, something happens in one of our districts, and you need them to seek clarification from one of us, this language allows you to give, uh, per, um, approval to do that. So I don't want a pigeonhole if you feel like it needs to go beyond that, so I agree. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, let's take this vote in the queue.
That was items one through three.
All right, Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
Brings us to item B one, under administration, request council approval of a resolution to amend Resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero six one, approving the implementation of the city of South Fulton's travel policy to modify provisions pertaining to international travel.
The chair will entertain a motion.
I, I move to approve, um, but also to note, I think we talked about at the last meeting, that it would be Raul, um, Bell, and Willis. That's fine, okay, well, it looks unanimous at this point. Okay, uh, yeah, yeah, so we'll, we'll leave it the way it is then, because it seems to be. All right, I move, yeah, move to approve.
It's been properly moved and seconded, any further discussion?
Yes.
The chair recognizes Councilwoman Willis.
And I'll go in the queue for you. Um, on section, I think it was eight point three, we just need to make sure that our clerk is not responsible for compliance, because that is not specified in his duties, roles, and responsibilities. Roles and responsibilities. So we need to make sure that remains where it need to be remain and it was left blank. So who is going to be responsible for compliance because we don't need to have that hiccup.
Please, um, I discussed it with the city manager based on the city clerk's concerns and the city manager and I will split that responsibility.
So, thank you. Can we put that in the um, in the policy? Okay, city manager and city attorney. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you, y'all. I think this is going to get us. Where we need to be.
Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, let's take this vote in the queue.
That motion was approved unanimously, seven zero as amended.
All right, uh, please sound the next item.
Brings us to item B two, it's request council approval of the eighth anniversary and state of the city address proposal. As budgeted in the Public Affairs Department, including local school performing arts opportunities for students.
The Chair will entertain a motion.
I move to approve the council's uh request to approve the uh eighth anniversary of the state of the city address. Proposal is budgeted in the Public Affairs Department, including local schools performing arts opportunities for students.
Is there any discussion?
No.
I have discussion. Uh, I did have a request. For money for a two gospel songs. Is that included in this? I I didn't hear it as sounded, so I don't I don't know.
Yeah, this this was the original. It did not include additional funding for a gospel choir. Um, if that's the will of the council, we can include that and we will um pay for it out of, probably out of my budget. Up to five thousand dollars was the request. From more than, more than one.
I I move that we pro- approve up to five thousand dollars to come out of the mayor's budget.
I want to say it's moved and seconded, uh, because I want us to go home, but there is already a motion on the floor, so does that need to be a substitute motion? Does someone need to withdraw? I want to do it in decency and order. All right, the amendment has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Willis.
So I would like to have, um, I would like to, the state of the city, are you going to get um approval of? I just don't want any surprises. So my email was, we need to have everything. We want videos that we are. Um, participating in and we want to review before the state of the city. Um, we want whatever is going to be said, um, approved before the state of the city. Um, you sent to the entire council and approved before the state of the city. And we need you prepared, city manager, um, to, are you on the program to give an overview for the state of the ci-? Okay, that's fine. All right, so I just need, um, we just want our videos because last year we didn't get to preview the videos before the state of the city. Uh, I don't want to be surprised. I want to make sure this this the video is. I just want to preview it and then um I would ask that you um have the state of the city address reviewed and approved. I don't want any surprises at the state of the city and it be sent to the entire council. Is that too much to ask?
Actually, that sounds like uh an additional motion to what has already been approved. So could we first take these motions one at a time? Could we approve the amended motion that is on the floor for up to five thousand dollars for my budget? All right, uh, let's take that vote by a show of hands. All right, let's uh go to the second motion. Uh. Is there a second for the second motion?
I need, may I please restate it? I would like to have, huh? Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. I would like to have the um videos, district videos. Uh, reviewed and approved before the state of the city and the state of the city address reviewed and approved before the state of the city. That's my motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? I have discussion. Madam Attorney, um. Can we have speeches approved by uh officials bef- by a vote of council?
There's nothing specific in the charter that leads to that, um, and I would advise against that. Um, in that you all as duly elected officials should be allowed to give the speeches that you've been elected by your constituents to give. I will say that give the caveat that the charter does state that if you're giving an opinion. That is your personal opinion and is not reflective of the city that you need to say that explicitly and not leave that inference. The other thing logistically is I can see a scenario where someone submits a speech and then gets up there and says something completely different. And in that aspect, it would kind of defeat the purpose of reviewing the speech. So I I I think it's a slippery slope. I would advise against it, but of course the council is able to do what they want to do.
Wait, are you, um, do I need to go in the queue? How do you want me to do this?
You got it.
So let me provide um further clarification. So the last, and and I was trying not to do this. Um, the last state of the city, um, several council members complained that they, um, their videos were. They didn't get a chance to see their videos before the state of the city and several council members did not necessarily um feel that the videos. Um, they didn't, they had some, they had some room for improvement for the videos, but they weren't able to get feedback. Because the first time they saw the video was at the state of the city. And so I would like I, my video previewed before the state of the city. Second of all, um, the last state of the city, which is online, um, there was uh recommendations given. And for some reason, uh, we started hearing about it. Genealogy. Had nothing to do with the city of, the the business of the city. It had nothing, it was personal views. No one wanting to hear about someone's genealogy. And where they, where people came from, people want to hear about the state of the city. They want to hear about the state of the municipal su- services. What we have done, how we're moving forward. That is, and it was said that guidelines was given at the state of the city and those guidelines were not followed. So how do you correct that? How do you correct that, Attorney Kelly? What I am asking is that the city manager be given the opportunity. Um, to review the state of the city address and if there's concerns, she can then come to the council. Now, if there's a deviation, then there are things that we, there are put in place for us to. Address if said things are not said that don't reflect the views of this city. And so I just, you know, just don't like when we can alleviate a lot of things. And then when things happen, then the whole world come crashes down and then everybody has so much to say. So what I'm asking is to see the videos before the state of the city. And I'm asking that the city manager be allowed to review the state of the city address before the state of the city. Now, we could vote it up or down, but if something happens, I just really don't care to hear the backdoor conversations about it. Like they were last year.
So. A couple of things. One, I think it would probably be helpful if we separate these two motions. I think each council member should probably have the right to review their own videos. So uh, could we take that, that item? Could we vote on that item separately? All right, uh, but. Can we, can can I just call for the vote separately or do we need to? Okay. Go ahead.
I move to withdraw my motion and state the motion separately. I agree with you, Mayor, on this occasion.
All right, so there's.
So I'm going to restate that all council members be allowed to review their video before the state of the city address.
All right, it's been properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion on this motion? The Chair recognizes city manager Sweden.
So Shaheen has already contacted you and asked you to give him dates for your video shoot. They'll, they're going to have a base and you can choose to incorporate some of those pictures if you want. But we want to make sure we get it done and edited and to you and you give us your feedback well in advance of the first and of course, we don't have much time. So you got an email. If you would respond to it, that would be great.
All right, uh, let's take this vote by a show of hands. Approving your videos before they are shown to the state of the city.
Approving our videos before we're shown.
All right, Councilwoman Willis, do you have another motion?
My other motion is to, for the city manager to review and approve the state of the city address. And if she has concerns, she can reach out to council members, but at least allow her to review and approve the state of the city address. Um. That's my second motion.
Is there a second? That motion fails for a lack of a second. Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
Mr. Mayor, uh, if I could take the next action item, which is the items that were were added to the agenda.
Yes.
Uh, request approval of the appointment of Jane Selby to the C A C Committee. As well as the three events uh added by uh Mayor Pro Tim Pritchett for April seventeenth, April twenty first, and April twenty eighth.
The Chair will entertain a motion.
Move to approve the uh the events as sounded.
All right, it's been properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, let's take this vote uh in the queue. All right, we can do it by show of hands because he was right at it. I don't even know if you have it in the queue.
I record that motion approved unanimously, seven zero.
All right, please sound the next item.
The last items on the agenda are first read ordinance. Uh, we have two this evening. The first is a first read and ordinance to amend the City of South Fulton zoning ordinance as amended for the purposes of amending restrictions. On golf courses by adding event centers as a necessary use customary to a golf course or country club. This is sponsored by Councilmember Gums.
All right.
And als- and also we have the other first read is request council approval of an ordinance supporting the establishment of of the core. Community, opportunity, resilience, and empowerment Alliance Advisory Board and bylaws. This is sponsored by Councilmembers Gums and Sebastian.
All right. Please sound, any any discussion on those items? It is a first read, but is there any discussion on those items? All right, seeing here none, uh, Mr. Clerk, please uh sound the next item or is that, that was the last item. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn. There's been properly moved and seconded. Let's, any discussion? I have discussion. I would like to just say I am so happy that we are returning to our regularly scheduled uh agenda times. We are out at nine o'clock. Good night, ladies and gentlemen. I'll take this vote by a show of hands. We are adjourned South Fulton forever.